Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, the Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk. Please call the roll to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Shanir.
Here.
Councilmember Gata.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Thank you very much, everyone. Welcome to the meeting. I would ask us all who can rise. I'd ask Councilmember Larry Carr to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Carr. Um, I want to welcome all the members of the public. We are meeting by Zoom and um, I am not in Sacramento, so I may um, go back and forth with Vice Mayor Harris in terms of uh, leading some of these items. But um, why don't we begin with the consent calendar here? Are there members that have any questions um, or comments on any uh, items on the consent calendar?
And Mr. Mayor, I have no callers on the consent calendar.
Okay. Are there any members?
I'll second it.
Consent has been moved. If there are no comments or, or changes from the members and no public testimony, let's please call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Shanir.
Aye.
Councilmember Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinberg.
Aye.
And Councilmember Ashby and Hanson are absent.
Like that, that passes then uh, on a unanimous vote. We now move to our public hearings. I know we've got a, a couple involving delinquent uh, charges regarding sidewalk repairs and weed abatement. Um, is it possible that we might take the two of those together even though they, I know they need to be separate votes? That's items nineteen and twenty. Who's presenting there?
Uh, Susan Wren, our finance manager is presenting. They can be taken together, but we do need to open and close the hearings and take separate votes.
Okay, that's fine. Let's take them together, Ms. Wren.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers.
Good evening.
Would you like a presentation or are, is it, are we opening the public hearing and?
Well, that's up, that's up to the members here. Is there anything?
To open and close the public, open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, if you want to make a brief, brief presentation, um, we'd appreciate it on both items. Thank you.
Certainly. The, the public hearings are to confirm assessments to real property for delinquent repairs um, for sidewalks and for weed abatement to properties. Uh, the city has um, ordinances uh, related to these things. I can tell you, I know that there is some um, some curiosity uh, about the timing of these assessments. And I just want to assure you that all of the invoices um, that these, that were delinquent um, occurred prior to January first uh, two thousand twenty. So they are not in any of the uh, COVID era and. Um, so the assessments there, there also, everyone is given an opportunity uh, for a hearing in front of a lean officer and to uh, ask for um, um, to contest the, either the rate, the amount um, or the charge itself.
Okay. Thank you so much. Um, I'm going to ask Councilmember Gata uh, to make a comment. You opened the public hearing, was seconded. Do you want to close it as well, Councilmember Gata?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing um, since there are no members of the public signed up to speak. But I, I did want to want, thank you, Susan, for making the clarification that uh, the vote, that this are for folks prior to the COVID crisis situation. Uh, and we do, we have had uh, many folks who uh, have had uh, citations or notifications from um, uh, from our code officers about broken sidewalks. And so I, the, what I'd like to ask the staff is, is to continue working with those homeowners and property owners with broken sidewalks. Many of them don't have the resources or money at this point to uh, to address, immediately address the situation. And those, uh, and uh, and, and in some of these areas, I'd like to also uh, you know, you know, state what's probably the obvious is that most of our broken sidewalks are areas in our older part of our city, which also tend to be many areas where it's uh, lower income um, uh, communities who, on the natural, even before COVID, have challenges. So I, I want to make sure that we, want to take that into account. And I'd like to start figuring out and see if we can work to develop a process that can help us address the cost of, of sidewalk repairs. I know how critical and important they are, particularly for walking. I know my own neighbor tripped on a sidewalk, busted her teeth out and was unconscious uh, until someone found her. So there is a danger to having bad sidewalks, but I want to make sure that we find a method to help many of those uh, sometimes seniors who can't afford the four thousand dollars sometimes to repair a sidewalk. So if you can just respond a little bit of that, Susan, and then uh, thank you for the work and being conscious of the, the challenges that many of our residents face.
Thank you. And I know uh, the Public Works Department uh, who issues the sidewalk um, handles a sidewalk program. They have, Public Works Director might be online with us. Um, but they are certainly working with citizens right now. They're allowing for more time. We're taking payment plans. We're, we're really trying to um, postpone if we can the repair. So really trying to work with citizens for whom this has become a hardship.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I think Councilmember Jennings has a hand.
Councilmember Jennings, of course. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I think Susan just answered my question, which was in regard to the payment plans that we offer. And just to kind of address some of the concerns that we have for our constituents who may not have money during this, these times to pay for these kinds of repairs, having a payment plan in place where we are actively working with constituents in order to help them uh, in this time. Uh, I just was wondering if Susan could speak a little bit more about the payment plan and maybe how flexible it is so that it's not a hardship at this time.
The, the payment plans that are orchestrated through the Finance Department uh, are very liberal. We allow a payment plan for anything over a hundred dollars. And so we're, we're looking to the um, the property owner to come to us with uh, with, with what it is that they're able to afford. And if the Public Direct, Works Director is on, he can speak maybe to the, to the timeframe, um, the extension of the calendar that all this is going through. And, and to reiterate also, the, we send out these particular sidewalk assessments once a year. So these are for invoices that have occurred through the calendar year of twenty nineteen.
Yes, so this is Ryan Moore. I'm your Public Works Director. Um, since COVID started, we have suspended um, requirement that property owners pay for their sidewalk repairs as is required by city code. And what we've done instead is said, if you have a tripping hazard, which would open the city up to liability, we will come out and repair that, do a temporary interim fix free of charge. It's on the city's dime. And we will allow the deferment of the ultimate fix by the property owner until some future currently unspecified date when COVID is behind us. So we are not requiring anyone who can't afford it to repair the sidewalk. We will go out with city crews and fix it temporarily until the, the pandemic's behind us.
Does that answer the question?
It does answer the question. I just want the public to know how flexible we can be. We just would like to make sure that we get those sidewalks fixed. We can be flexible as far as our payment plan and the terms that we have. And uh, and, and, and can make sure that it doesn't hurt them during this time, during the, the virus, during the time of the virus.
Very good. Okay. Are there any other questions? Is there any public testimony, Madam Clerk, on this, on these two items? Madam Clerk? You're muted.
I have no callers on these two items.
Okay, very good. So um, there's been a, uh, we've opened and closed the public hearing. Councilmember Gata, do you want to move uh?
Move item.
Move, first, let's move item nineteen. Is there a second on nineteen?
There is a second.
Councilmember Warren made a second on item nineteen.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Warren. Very good. Okay, let's call the roll on nineteen, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Shanir.
Aye.
Councilmember Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. That measure passes. For item twenty, Councilmember Gata, you make a motion. Councilmember Warren seconds again. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Shanir.
Aye.
Councilmember Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. That measure passes. Thank you very much. Let's move on to uh, item twenty-one, please. Ten-foot utility Eastman on Euclid Avenue. Who's presenting and is there a motion on this item? Uh, uh, Councilmember Warren, is this your district?
It's in District Four.
It's in District Four. I apologize. Okay. Uh, and Councilman Hanson is.
Still on vacation, Mr. Mayor?
Sorry about that. Yes.
Open and close the public hearing.
My brain. Shouldn't have said anything, man. Here we go. Go ahead.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gata and a second by Councilmember Carr. Is that correct?
Yes. Is there public testimony?
There are no callers on this item.
Okay, let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember Warren.
Councilman Warren.
Let me connect him. Um, Vice Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Shanir.
Aye.
Councilmember Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Warren.
If he's not connected, he should certainly be a lot of the, oh, he is. Okay, good.
Thank you. And Mayor Steinberg.
Um, aye. That measure then passes as well. We have one more um, item under these categories here about delinquent utility uh, charges. Is there a, a motion and a second on this item?
So staff does have some items to read into the record on item number twenty-two.
Very good. Then please go ahead.
Can you hear me? Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers. My name is Fadi Jaja, uh, Billing Services Manager with the Department of Utilities. I would like to read into record that the total amount to be levied as special assessment, as indicated in the staff report, has been reduced as a result of payment received. The total delinquency amount to be levied as a special assessment is six million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, one oh one dollar and sixty-five cents. These delinquent charges are for services that the city provided to the property owners through approximately February twenty twenty, prior to COVID nineteen pandemic. Exhibit A in the staff report has been revised to reflect these changes and a copy is on file in the city clerk's office. I respectfully request the mayor and council to open and close the public hearing and adopt the resolution. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, sir. Um, and again, the original amount, it went down by how much because people have?
Almost, uh, originally was nine million, eight hundred thousand. It went down to six million, one hundred and forty-nine. So really, we almost received uh, three million and some in payment since we initiated the notices to the, to the owner, property owners.
Daryl, you can't spend that right now.
Yeah, that's quite, quite significant. And as a matter of fact, we went from ten thousand customers who were noticed down to only five thousand would be sent. So literally half of the customers have paid.
Very good. Question. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
So uh, may I ask, you know, looking at the list, there are a number of people who owe multiple thousands of dollars, which means that they have not paid their utility bill for quite some time. I'm, I'm wondering um, how much grace period do you give people before you contact them and say they're delinquent?
Yeah, uh, that's a good question. I just have to remind you that on the list, you have commercial as well as residential property. So when you see huge amount, this is for commercial. Usually, a lot of the single homes don't have a huge, huge bill. And because we do the special assessment every single year, we don't kind of accumulate a huge amount of money. Because this is a yearly process, as you know, and every year we become before city council to make sure that whatever is owed for the, you know, fiscal year is being paid hopefully by next year.
So, so Fadi, um, this does seem like a high amount. And you know, I've been doing this a few years. This seems higher than normal. Is that a fair assessment?
Well, the number of, of customers had been notified this year has been higher. And the reason for that, we explained in the staff report, but I would be more than happy to kind of give you a little explanation, is the fact that in our billing system, we did not have the collection process activated. Our system support, our IT guys were still developing that custom model. So when a customer is delinquent, we usually send them a notice. But this year, because we kind of was put on hold, so a lot of the customers did not receive like sixty-five, forty-five days notices, they were just like receiving their bill. But however, on the bill, uh, which we checked with our city attorney, as long as on the bill it says you have a delinquent, that was sufficient, sufficient until we kind of, you know, implement the process and which is going to be implemented in two weeks from now. The, the, the notices in our billing system. So that's one of the reasons why it was higher than usual as far as, you know, number of customers. However, we look back in the history, we've had in twenty sixteen, twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, we had literally around ten thousand customers also were notified.
Okay. Thank you, Fadi. Um, Mr. Mayor, I'd open, uh, move some and close the public hearing. You moved the item.
Very good. Is there a second on that? Thank you for a good report and for the explanation too, Fadi. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And Council, City Council.
Of course. Okay. A second by Councilmember Carr. Let's call the roll if there's no public testimony on the place.
There is no public testimony on this item. So Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Shanir.
Aye.
Councilmember Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. And measure passes. Thank you very much. Um, I would like to now take items twenty-three and twenty-four together. These, this is the Sacramento Police Department reports back, if you will, um, eh, eh, around um, the Cal, responding to the California Department of Justice, a recently released report on additional recommendations to our police department and also the police department's response to uh, the recommendations presented by the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission. So I don't know who is here, um, is that Captain Monk there?
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening to you. How are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Good. Welcome to our virtual meeting.
Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Um, as you mentioned, my name is Dan Monk and I am a captain in the office of the chief. Following the fatal shooting of Stephon Clark in two thousand eighteen, under the direction of Chief Daniel Hahn, our department embarked on a journey to improve our organization. We invited the California Department of Justice in, brought our department to conduct an independent assessment of our use of force-related policies, training and practices. This review was designed to help identify ways to achieve safer outcomes for our community. Sacramento Police Department has been innovative and open to change. We have worked to update current policy, improve our systems and practices, provide cutting-edge tools and training for employees and identify national and international best practices. All of these efforts have shown our commitment to finding new and innovative ways to provide the best possible public safety for our community. The Phase One review was designed to enhance those initiatives by providing us with recommendations, ground and evidence, and promising practices from around the country to help guide our reform efforts. Phase one of the DOJ's assessment and recommendations were focused on the following six areas. Use of force policies, use of force reporting and investigation, use of force training, officer-involved shooting incident review, personnel complaint procedures and community engagement and transparency. In January of two thousand nineteen, the DOJ completed Phase One of their review. They found our personnel to be professional, thoughtful and committed in making change. Throughout the review process, our personnel at all levels of the department were open, cooperative and receptive to evaluation and improvement. In fact, the DOJ noted that while they were conducting their review, our command and supervisory staff had already begun to make changes in policies, procedures and systems in an effort to improve. The Department of Justice identified a total of sixty-six recommendations distributed amongst the six broad areas of review. Upon receiving and reviewing the report, we began to research, evaluate and implement the recommendations. To date, we have implemented sixty-one of the sixty-six recommendations. Of the remaining five recommendations, four are still in progress and one has been researched and considered, but not implemented. I would like to take a moment to report on the status of those five outstanding recommendations. The four recommendations that are still in progress are, uh, under use of force policies, recommendation eleven point six, SPD should consider eliminating the use of the conducted energy device or taser in drive stun mode. Our current CED policy is in the process of being updated. The latest CED revision includes a section prohibiting the use of drive stun except in the immediate defense of an officer or citizen where there is imminent risk of great bodily injury or death. The next two are under the use of force reporting and investigation, the first being recommendation five. SPD should establish a multidisciplinary team to conduct both the criminal and administrative investigations of level three reportable force incidents. We concur with this recommendation and support the creation and implementation of a multidisciplinary investigative team. We have requested budget augmentation for a lieutenant and two detectives to staff this endeavor. The next one is recommendation ten. SPD should consider entering into a memorandum of understanding with an outside agency regarding their potential role in the future use of force investigations and SPD improvements around serious use of force. We are not opposed to this recommendation as a way to create transparency and build trust in the investigative process. Currently, critical incidents such as officer-involved shootings and in custody deaths are investigated in a thorough manner and in collaboration with other independent agencies such as OPSA, the DA's office, the coroner's office and the Sacramento County Crime Lab. There are initiatives at the state legislative level that may also help guide our implementation of this recommendation. And the last one is under the Personnel Complaint Procedure Section. Recommendation six, SPD should enter into a memorandum of understanding with OPSA regarding its roles and responsibilities. Some procedural changes and notification of complaint receipt and closure have already been implemented by Internal Affairs and OPSA. As you all know, a new director for OPSA, Dr. Latisha Watson, was recently appointed and we have started engaging in communication with her. A formal memorandum of understanding will be discussed in the near future. The one recommendation that we have researched but not fully implemented is under our use of force policy section. It's recommendation eleven point eight. SPD should modify its canine-related policies so that its canines are deployed in a manner consistent with find and bark, find and bite approaches. We have thoroughly researched this recommendation. Our research revealed that a find and bark response does not necessarily result in a lower percentage of bites nor better overall search outcomes. Under this method, the canine stops in front of the subject and barks. If the canine perceives that the subject is attempting to flee, it bites the subject. This leaves the use of force decision up to the canine as it stands in front of the subject rather than the handler deciding when to use the canine to apprehend the subject. In contrast, our canine deployment is best described as a handler control method because it requires the canine officer to make the deployment decisions. Thus, holding the officer accountable for the outcome. We prefer to hold the handler accountable for the deployment and use of the canine as opposed to the canine. However, this recommendation did require us to fully evaluate our canine program and ensure that we were aligned with best practice as it relates to deployment and policy. As a result, we are updating our canine policy with enhanced language related to the use of the canine when a canine cannot be used and requiring additional noticing to allow more opportunities for suspects to surrender. These recommendations have been posted on our website under the Transparency tab since we have received the DOJ report. We periodically update the document as we complete our recommendations. This has allowed our community to keep track of our progress. And this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that, uh, just so we're clear, is that in response to the DOJ report? Or, uh, are both the DOJ report and the Police Review Commission?
Um, that is a response to um, the DOJ uh, Phase One report. And Deputy Chief Lester is presented to speak on the um, Police Review Commission.
Okay. Why don't we ta, why don't we take that one as well? Um, and then uh, we will open it up to public testimony on both, one or both items. And we will hear from the council for direction.
Okay, Mayor, this is Deputy Chief Kathy Lester. Can you hear me?
Yes. Hello, Chief Lester.
Hey, good evening, everyone. So I'm going to be giving the report back on the Police Commission recommendations um, as they were presented on July first. So I'll just sort of read through what was presented and then where we are as far as um, our response for um, changes, application of those recommendations. Um, the first several have to do with the use of force and our use of force policy. Um, the commission has recommended that we specify in policy three different levels of use of force. That has been completed and that is in our current policy, there are three levels of force. Um, the second, uh, we might need some clarification on it. It says seizures shall be treated as use of force and reported under a level. Um, for seizures, if it's a medical condition, that would not fit the use of force. Um, however, seizure can also be seizure of property, um, which occurs when there's some meaningful interference with an individual's interest in that property. Or a seizure of a person can occur when a peace officer physically applies force or when a person voluntarily submits uh, to a peace officer's authority. So a seizure legally can occur without a use of force or with the force so minimal that it would not rise to the level of what would be considered a reportable use of force. Um, the third piece of that is that use of force reporting discretion should be removed and all use of force should be reported. And we do concur with that, um, and that all use of force should be reported. It's outlined in the use of force policy. Um, it's very clear when force should be reported. The second or the last, um, the last piece of that recommendation has to do with the quarterly public posting on statistics related to use of force. Um, per um, AB nine fifty-three, which is the, which is RIPA, the California Racial Identifying, uh, Identity and Profiling Act, um, it requires that multiple data points be collected. We've already begun to collect this data. It has been reported to DOJ, um, but it hasn't been published yet. Um, if you want to see an example of the first eight cities which are considered wave one cities, they are available on the Open Justice um, portal for DOJ. Um, and based on our size, will be in the next wave. So in the interim, we are going to be publishing our data and we'll be publishing that uh, for two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and nineteen. And then when the RIPA data gets published, we'll also um, link to that from our transparency website. Um, the next recommendation was to change the SPD use of force policy definition of imminent threat to include some language, um, which writes, "An imminent threat is not merely a fear, a future threat, no matter how great the fear, but it is one that from the appearances must be instantly confronted and addressed." And that language is straight out of AB three ninety-two. Um, and so we are revising our policy to reflect that exact definition. Um, the next um, recommendation had to do with objectively reasonable force. And the recommendation is that our policy should state that the number one factor in determining objective reasonableness is whether an imminent threat to the safety of the officer or another exists. Um, there's a legal issue with this and that the Supreme Court ruled that there are a number of factors that officers have to consider um, when they determine reasonable list. Um, these factors do not include quote-unquote imminent threat. So to change the um, Supreme Court standard would be problematic. There is no such thing in these factors, which are known as Graham Factors, as a number-one factor. So legally, the decision to use force has to be based on a number of different factors, otherwise known as Graham Factors, the totality of the circumstances. The next recommendation is similar to that. It talks about imminent threat, and it says prohibited use of force should, or use of force prohibition should be against individuals who are not subject to arrest or detention except to protect the peace officer, the public, or another person. And the recommendation from the Commission is to add "from an imminent threat." And this would be similar to the previous recommendation, where legally, if an officer is going to use any force, they are required by law to consider a number of factors, not just the one of imminent threats. Moving on, the proposal is to add the definition of retreats into our policy. The statement is "retreat," quote-unquote, "does not mean tactical repositioning or other de-escalation tactics." And, you know, we concur with that, and that language of, directly from AB 392, will be added to our policy. The next one's a little bit longer. It has to do with de-escalation. And de-escalation, you know, we know how important that is, and a very important topic to, to be addressing. The Commission is recommending a different definition of de-escalation. Their definition states that de-escalation means action, taking action, or communicating verbally or non-verbally during a potential force encounter in an attempt to stabilize the situation and reduce the immediacy of the threat so that more time, options, and resources can be called upon to resolve the situation without the use of force or without a reduction of the force, or with, I'm sorry, with a reduction of the force necessary. De-escalation tactics include, but are not limited to, warnings, verbal persuasion, and tactical repositioning. This definition comes from something called the National Consensus Policy. In 2017, the National Consensus Policy and Discussion Paper on Use of Force, which was a collaborative effort among eleven law enforcement, leadership, and labor organizations in the United States, crafted this definition. POST, which is the agency that oversees police practices and standards in California, has a simpler definition, which is that de-escalation is the process of using strategies and techniques intended to decrease the intensity of the situation. And IACP has also done an extensive review of the literature. What they found is that there really is no one specific definition of de-escalation. So when you look at our policy, we actually believe that our policy is more specific and provides better direction to our officers than what is recommended by the Commission. Specifically, our policy includes techniques to stabilize a situation, and these include gathering information about the incident, assessing risks, using crisis intervention techniques, community and coordinating a response, and utilizing available resources such as personnel, equipment, uses of time, distance, and cover. So in essence, the policies are fairly similar. We just give our officers more specific direction in our de-escalation policy. The next proposal is that a peace officer shall give warning unless the officer has objectively reasonable grounds to believe that the person is aware of the fact that the officer is a peace officer. This proposal is legally problematic in that there is a case known as Dearley versus Rutherford, which requires a verbal warning when it's feasible and when it would not create a danger to the officer or others. So if we were to adopt this recommendation, it would require that the officer would have to subjectively interpret the subject's actions and then make assumptions as to the state of mind of the suspect. And there are times when warnings are not, are not feasible. So our policy aligns with, with current case law, which is the Dearley versus Rutherford case. The next section has to do with medical care, and that peace officers, as you know, are required to render medical care to subjects as soon as possible. We have an extensive policy on medical care in addition to our Use of Force Policy. This is 522.02, and it's available online. We've actually had that policy in place since 1993, and it's been revised throughout the years. The recommendation from the Commission is that it should be the supervisor's responsibility to inquire if a use of force resulted in injury, and if so, to render aid and ensure that emergency medical care is provided as soon as possible. But we actually require the officers on scene to do that, especially because sometimes the supervisor isn't immediately available, and so officers are required to render medical aid as soon as possible. The second piece of this is that the supervisor in their report should include their opinion as to whether the use of force and the provision of emergency care were consistent with our, with department policy, and make an entry in the Blue Team, which is our Use of Force Reporting software, to include the summary of the emergency care provided, which, that would be fine, but based on the Department of Justice's recommendations, we no longer have frontline supervisors determine if a use of force is within policy. Every use of force goes to the Use of Force Review Board, where it's presented and a consensus is made amongst command-level staff whether or not that use of force is in policy. So we've actually escalated it above the supervisor's ability to make that decision. Our policy in the preamble again points to, you know, an officer shall render, or if properly trained or otherwise, request medical aid as soon as reasonably possible. And then finally, the City Council policy on use of force requires that officers be trained in basic first aid, render medical aid as soon as safe to do so after a deadly force incident, and immediately notify EMS. So our policy does state that officers have to render medical aid. The Council policy states that, and we have, again, removed the supervisor's ability to make a policy decision on that. The next section has to do with drug testing after a use of force, and it says the involved officer shall submit to chemical testing for use of drugs or alcohol by use of a preliminary blood alcohol device at the scene and later transported to a medical facility for blood test or to a police station for a breath test via breath machine. Testing at a medical facility or a police department shall be conducted within two hours to preserve evidence if any. And we would concur with that. However, this item is contractual, and it does require a meet and confer with the bargaining unit. So it's not a policy decision that the police department can make. The next recommendation is to use peace officer throughout our policy instead of the term "police officer." And this is specifically through the Use of Force Policy and other policies. And we concur with that. There's, we can, we can do that. It, it will take some time to get through our policies, but we can certainly start with the ones that are more critical. They're high liability and high profile. So that is an easy, an easy change. Moving on to the Foot Pursuit Policy, there's a recommendation that our policy include the gravity of the suspected activity as an item to consider before initiating, continuing, or terminating a foot pursuit. And we would just like to note that we actually require many factors that officers are required to consider when initiating, continuing, or terminating foot pursuits. So we can certainly add gravity to the list. However, right now, we also require officers to continually assess and evaluate whether the need for apprehension justifies risk to the safety of the officers, the public, and the fleeing suspect. Further, we state that an officer may pursue suspects only when he or she reasonably believes the suspect has committed an act that would justify a stop, a detention, or arrest. Also, officers have to consider the criminal violation, whether the suspect is identified and can apprehend later. So we believe that, in essence, that says the gravity, but we can certainly add the term "gravity" into that policy. There's another recommendation on body-worn camera and foot pursuits, and the, the recommendation would be a change to our overall body-worn camera policy. The change would be the officer initiating a foot pursuit should always, unless physically unable, activate their body-worn camera. Our policy states that officers are required to activate their camera as soon as it is practical. So the policy specifically provides guidance that if it's not feasible due to the risk to the safety of the employee or others, the employee should then activate the body-worn camera as soon as it's safe to do so. So we would like to continue to provide that exception for the safety of our officers. There is a thirty-second buffer that captures thirty seconds of body-worn camera video prior to the physical activation. Moving on, regarding an ethnic studies course, the Commission has recommended that the department phase in a requirement of an ethnic studies course as part of the college course requirements for new recruits. For officers that transfer from another police department, the Commission would like them to take a course at a community college within their first two years. The requirement for officers that transfer to SPD would be contingent upon negotiations with labor. And I think that we can certainly get to where the Commission is recommending. However, to require a college course may, on this particular topic, may reduce our pool of eligible candidates coming into the police department, and it would require existing officers that attend a college course would result in an unfunded cost to the department for tuition and labor. We currently do a number of hands-on opportunities for employees to gain experience and familiarity in this area. In addition to the state-mandated cultural awareness training, all recruits participate in the Walk in My Shoes Program, a day of service, implicit bias training, and some additional cultural awareness training, which is above the state mandate. The department is also currently partnering with the American Leadership Forum to deliver implicit bias training for existing officers and human-centered design training. For diversity and people of color retention, the Commission is recommending annual surveys of police personnel that include questions about diversity and inclusion and highlight the experience of police of color, women, and issues faced during the application and selection in examination process, including retention concerns, and then to address these issues raised through the planning process. Just recently, the Police Department has partnered with the University of San Diego to conduct an officer study. This study examines fairness, promotions, officer concerns. We're currently in the completion of this. This is a pilot study, which we'd like to continue in future years, and we can certainly add and expand on the current questions to include some of these items. Moving on to process, these really are more recommendations for Mayor and Council to decide on. The first one is that the Police Review Commission should review and give feedback to SPD, Mayor, and Council before adoption of any new updates on Sacramento Police Department's general orders. The second one is that the city should adopt a policy and process where they agree to review at a public meeting and consider Commission recommendations. So those are process issues outside of the scope of the police department. So with that, I will end my presentation on the recommendations and available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief Lester. I know that we have eight callers, members of the public. I'm not sure whether it's one of the two items or both, but that's fine. Let's hear from all eight callers, and then we will open it up to the City Council for discussion. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have six callers. First caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name's Paul, District 4. Police reform is just not enough. I get that you all are concerned about not being seen as a law and order candidate, but if I were a moral person, I would be more concerned at the potential for civil rights abuse and lives lost as a result of reforms not being followed, yet continual police funding increases. Community programs do not have to go through the police. Mental health programs do not have to go through the police. Every time the community wants community funding, it does not have to go through the police. We don't need the police to start building community housing. Sadly, I wouldn't be remotely surprised if I heard you suggest this. It's ridiculous to every single time put more money into the police department when it's an entirely unnecessary apparatus to deliver the services that are needed. More money doesn't equal more safe. Reform has been tried. Policies have been made about chokeholds and other similar abuses. The policies are violated because there is no meaningful way to hold officers accountable. They need to be held responsible for their actions. This means ending qualified immunity. This means ending the officer's Bill of Rights. This means officers actually being held accountable for their actions if they are criminal, or civilly responsible if that is appropriate. If the police truly agree that they should be held to a higher standard, then they should jump at the chance to be held liable in the event that they violate civil rights or murder someone. They would want bad officers taken off the force to remove the continual bad mark on all of them. If they don't intend to follow through on reforms in a meaningful way, then they won't. I'm also assuming that you're not combining these two items as a way to minimize public testimony. If you're not doing that, then you should give each speaker four minutes. If you are, then go with two, and we'll know that you're trying to limit how much you have to be hassled with our opinions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, this is Robert Cupp. I want to make some recommendations myself. One, all police officers must be drug and alcohol tested and go through mental health after an officer's shooting or every six months, which is applicable. Two, any police officer that turns off their body camera, it's subject to be suspended. Three, any police officer that qualifies a police report where somebody gets overcharged of a crime should be suspended or fired. Four, any non-lethal device should not be shot at a person's head. Because I've, I've heard people get blinded or getting a fractured skull because of a non-lethal round. And I agree with the previous caller, the police officer's Bill of Rights of Qualified Immunity should be gone. And next, any police officer that terminated from another police department shall not be hired by SAC PD. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Megan McAvoy, and I am calling from District 1. I don't believe that these police reforms are doing nearly enough. It's ridiculous that the DOJ finds the police department is professional, and there's still murders on the floor. The best way to get rid of police brutality is to get rid of the amount of police we have. The police don't prevent the crime. The best way to prevent crime is community investment. We should instead be taking the money that we spend on the police budget, which is more than half of the city budget and almost half of the MedRU budget, and be putting it into things that will actually prevent crime, like education, like drug rehabilitation, all of these things that would stem crime and not just arrest people. It's embarrassing how many times people have to keep calling into the City Council for them to understand this. So I'm asking the City Council to defund the police. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, I'm calling because I'm concerned that Steinberg and the City Council don't care about what their constituents are asking for. We've been demanding that you listen to us and make the decision to defund Sacramento PD, a move that would ultimately serve to benefit and strengthen our communities. But all you're offering are ineffective reforms and more cops monologuing about how much they've improved because now they're going to give people a warning before they shoot at us. If you're not going to listen to us, why hold these meetings? Why did you run for office if you were going to disregard what your constituents want and just do what you want anyway? I heard Angelique Ashby is planning to run for California Senate to replace Richard Pan, and I think that is so interesting because you really haven't done much that we in the town have asked for, such as pushing for the defunding of SAC PD. So I guess the logical choice after you failed at your job is to seek a higher position. Daryl Steinberg has made his love of cops very clear. We had to sit through hours of police officers and read off their prepared scripts talking about how hard it is to be a police officer. My suggestion for that would be to quit and get a job that actually serves society. Have you considered garbage collection? Like, you think being a cop is hard? Have you ever worked in the food service or retail industry? And there, we're never allowed to shoot at customers who scare us or make us upset. People working the Taco Bell drive-through line have better de-escalation skills than Sacramento PD. Don't ever forget, this is the same department that shot Stefan Clark for holding his cellphone in his grandma's backyard. Stop dancing around these ineffective reforms and defund- Stop dancing around these ineffective reforms and defund the police.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Catherine Langobristar. I'm a resident of District Three. I'm calling today to ask that you defund the police, because reforms do not work. They don't address the systemic ways in which the criminal justice system, and particularly policing, has been credibly documented through numerous studies to allow for state sanctioned racial discrimination and ultimately leads to disproportionate state violence against BIPOC. The police do not serve the community, and we must be bold in this moment and defund the police, rather than simply seeking reforms that do not work and will not protect our community. And this means moving money into community services that work. This won't happen overnight, but we have to commit now to starting that process. And that means speaking up and acting boldly, council members and mayor, to stand up to police unions and lay out a plan to defund the police and invest in communities. Once again, I cannot stress enough that police reforms do not work. They don't protect our communities because of a system built on racism that operates by protecting their own, not the community. So we must instead dismantle this system and invest in communities who know how to care for one another and build on those strengths through providing housing, health services, mental health professionals, and other services that intervene, so we don't have a need for incarceration. Rather, we're providing the resources that keep people from being put in situations where they maybe feel compelled to commit crime or may succumb to addiction or health challenges, because we stepped in and provided those services before it gets to that point. Mayor and city council members, it's your job to represent our community. I'm here in solidarity with everyone who has been calling you over the past few months, who have been out in the streets signing petitions, who are asking you to put your money where your mouth is, to defund the police and to redirect that money to the community services that need it. We've lost too many people to police violence. One person is too many, and we've lost way more than that. So we must rethink our budget.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, we will remember your inaction during this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, Mayor Steinberg and City Council. I am leaving a public comment today to express my concerns on proposed police reform and recommendations that were talked today, talked about today. We aren't asking for reforms, because reform is not enough. We're asking for reforms when Stefan Clark was murdered. Any of your reforms worked, then a constituent in Sacramento would not have been shot today by a police officer. Your constituents are asking you to defund the police department, because your budget is racist. Your budget is deadly, and your budget murders black and brown people in Sacramento. Your budget reflects your leadership and reflects how much you care for Sacramento and the people of Sacramento. We do not need law enforcement. We need housing. We need healthcare. We need food, a job, education, free public transit, and resources for small businesses and undocumented people. We need crisis intervention programs with trained professionals who are educated on how to de-escalate different forms of crisis. And we need members of our communities and neighborhoods to lead these programs. Your reforms have proven to be corrupt, just like your Office of the Community Response, which you said is ran by a social worker, but that social worker is a police officer. Your reform is led by a police officer. Your reform invests more money in the police. Your reform increases the police budget, and this is exactly what we are not asking for. We're asking for you to decrease the police budget and increase programming that will prevent crime, that will intervene crime without killing black and brown lives, that will help people heal and recover from the trauma that they were exposed to. So please, 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 listen to your constituents. Mayor Steinberg, I can't see if you're looking up. You weren't looking up earlier. Respect your callers today.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Defund the fucking police and invest in the community, period.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. I sat while two police officers told the city of Sacramento that the DOJ told us that we were doing a good job. And what I've seen over the last few weeks, over the last few months, over the last few years, the police department that is, while maybe in good standing with the DOJ, has continued to use violent and aggressive tactics to oppress people of color, to terrorize communities, and to simply take control of the city's budget. We know that reform is not enough. We know that ultimately the end goal is abolition. But what we're asking for today, City Council, is that, again, you begin to listen to the people in the actual community who are speaking. Sacramento City People's Budget, we're asking that you listen to the community that's hurting, right? We're talking about Stefan Clark. We're talking about Joseph Mann. But we also know that someone was just shot today, right? We're asking that you look at the fact that we saw Sacramento PD be extremely violent with protesters, right? Physically assault them, shoot them with rubber bullets, and we know that those are meant to be aimed to the ground. We're asking that these reforms, they're not enough. They're simply not enough, and we're asking for a reduction in the budget so that we can take that money and enhance the community and to build a better Sacramento, a reimagined Sacramento where it's safe for everyone, where there's freedom for everyone, where there's justice for everyone. And that is simply not the case currently. Again, we heard a police officer tell us that cameras can only be activated when practical, right? That the language of imminent threat must be.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Reform is not enough. We need to see action in the money. We need to see a defunding of Sacramento Police Department so that the community can be safer.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yeah, thank you very much, Richard Wake, City Council, District Five. And I've been paying attention to this stuff now for quite a while. And, you know, you guys, all of you on the city council, have had plenty of opportunities to make substantial reform here in the city of Sacramento. I mean, I totally agree with one of the previous callers said about Councilwoman Ashby. A lot of her campaign was funded, her yard signs, and a lot of her mail was funded by the Sacramento Police Officers Association. And others on the council take substantial donations from the Sacramento Police Officers Association. How can you guys stand for meaningful reform when you're doing that? I don't get that. You know, three out of the last four elections in the city council, you guys had an opportunity to endorse African-American candidates in Ali Cooper, Tamika LaCluce, and also Katie Valenzuela in this last city council election. And you know what? Most of you endorsed the status quo, okay? That's wrong. You guys have had opportunity to support progressive candidates that supported reform here in Sacramento, and you failed to do so. Instead, you endorsed a Nazi sympathizer for district attorney in Anne Marie Schubert, who's failed to prosecute cops all the time when people have been killed or injured by police officers. Anne Marie Schubert failed to prosecute Nazis that stabbed people in the Capitol in 2016. And you know what? You guys, all of you that did that, need to apologize for that. You need to take the power away from Howard Chan to fire police officers, and you guys need to get a commission that's going to implement reforms and actually put things into place that are meaningful. That endorsement of Anne Marie Schubert was shameful. It was disrespectful to all of you as members of the Democratic Party. You guys need to man up and apologize for that. That was just extremely shameful, what you did. You guys aren't for reform. You're for keeping the status quo. You know, you guys didn't say anything back a couple of years ago when ICE went over to the Golden One Center and harassed Latinos.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, you guys didn't do anything when ICE came into the Golden One Center and hassled Latinos that were working the Pro Bowl writers steward. You guys are, you know, the proof.
Thank you for your comments.
You guys have done nothing for reform in Sacramento.
Thank you. Next caller, please. And this is our final caller on this item. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, before I start, I want a clarification. Do we get four minutes to speak on Items 27 and 28, or do we have two minutes?
You have two minutes.
Do we get to call back for another two minutes into the two items on the agenda?
No, you don't. You have two minutes total for both items.
So two minutes total for two items on the agenda?
Yes, please, please make your comments.
I appreciate the recommendations from the DOJ, but I think you guys are very well aware that reforms haven't led to any changes, especially when officers aren't actually held accountable for their violations of reform. In the interest of reforming, I prefer that you reallocate resources to community organizations. We don't need use of four standards if we don't have encounters where police think they're being threatened. We need mental health services. We need community support for children. We need jobs for teens. We need homes for families. The community knows the needs of the community, so you should listen to what they're asking for, and we're asking for money to be reallocated for community services. Clearance rates have remained dismal despite the increases in funding and actual precipitous decline in crime, so it's evident that they're not optimizing their funds or their time. So these resources should be reallocated. The police department themselves have said that they're asked to do too much, so we need to ask them to do the things that they're trained to do and nothing else. We don't need them responding to traffic incidents. We can have traffic-specific officers. We don't need armed officers responding to broken windows. We can have trained forensic investigators. We don't need them responding to fare evasions on transit systems. We can have transit police, or actually transit for children. We don't need them responding to brake lights. We can support people so they can afford to, you know, maintain their vehicles. Furthermore, we should consider all officers must be at least age 25. Insurance rates for men drop at age 25, because it's well documented that their brains aren't developed fully. I don't understand why we allow people whose brains aren't fully developed to execute
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
We allocate funds from the police department and support community services.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Thank you to the members of the public who called in. Want to hear from council. I know I have a couple of questions and comments, so, but why don't we begin with Councilmember Carr?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The question is, have these recommendations from the police commission been given to the police commission? Have you made a report to them? Chief?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Carr. I couldn't get my audio working. This is Kathy Lester. No, the commission, some of these recommendations were sent to mayor and council last year. However, the recommendations that I've spoken on were presented on the first of July during the reform meeting, and we were asked to come back and provide comment on those recommendations.
Do you plan to take them to the police oversight commission?
I don't know if we're scheduled on the agenda, but I'm sure there'll be discussion about these items at some point in the future.
Okay. I highly recommend that you, as soon as possible, initiate a dialogue with the commissioners to let them know what your analysis is of their recommendations.
Yes, Councilmember Carr, we actually have participated in an ongoing ad hoc using department staff and commissioners regarding these items.
Okay, good. There's been, a couple of callers addressed this, and I know there's some things that are planned for our city manager's house. I think it's a basic lack of understanding of governance. The police chief does work for the city manager, and all the police officers work for the police chief, but the city manager works for us. The buck stops with the city council. It does not stop with anyone down the line. Everything that happens or fails to happen in this city is the responsibility of the city council. If the city council feels that the city manager is not doing his job, he's not holding the police chief accountable, or if he thinks the police chief is not holding his officers accountable, then we have a remedy for that with our city manager. But it's wrong to think that the buck stops anywhere in this city other than the city council. We ran for office. We got elected. We can take the heat. Don't blame our employees for anything. We are responsible. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Carr. Are there other members? I know I've got a comment or two. Why don't I step on in if I might?
And I have a comment too, Mr. Mayor. This is Alan.
Okay, do you want to go before me, Councilman Warren?
Yeah, I'll be brief.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted, you know, there were some items that were discussed, and one in particular, when I heard it explained that it was a meet-and-confer item, and that was the drug testing after an officer involved shooting. And my question is, are all meet-and-confer items or items that are subject to the contract, is it mandatory that those are actually negotiated through the normal process? Or is it appropriate from time to time to step outside of that agreement and make changes when they kind of scream out that something should be done? And so, I mean, that could be, maybe the city attorney or even one of the folks that, Assistant Chief Lester, maybe someone can address that question.
Kathy Lester here. I think that that's actually a labor relations question, not a police department question.
This is the city manager. I want to have our HR director maybe weigh in on that, because that is correct. That's a labor relations question in HR. Shelley, are you on the line? You might be on mute.
Well, I guess, Howard, during the course of the negotiations, I mean, is it always customary for, you know, the items that go through the negotiating process, or are there times when it's more appropriate? I mean, we're in a heightened environment, you know, there's a lot of emotion going around, and some of these issues that are being brought by our community, I mean, are seemingly common sense, you know, items, you know, it would seem to me that it's a very reasonable request to, you know, want to have drug testing, to want to make sure that we don't have folks that are, you know, involved in these kind of high-profile incidences and then, you know, not know whether, you know, there is some other issue that maybe causes a balancing issue and maybe a response that ultimately is going to cost the city millions of dollars. And so, I mean, it would just seem to me that, you know, if we're working collaboratively, you know, we should have an environment where we're working in the best interest of our public and our community and our city, which would include, you know, maybe a little bit more flexibility as it relates to some of these contract issues. And so, you know, I know we're waiting to hear back from labor relations, but it would seem to me that there could be some room, even either now or when we do open up the contracts, we need to build some language into the contracts that allow us to really come back and deal with some of these issues, because, I mean, this is an explosive situation. Every time we have a officer-involved shooting or officer-involved excessive use of force claim, it becomes a citywide and sometimes even a countrywide issue. And I think we need to start to deal with some of the other things, so we can let people know that, no, you know, the issue of drugs or alcohol or steroids or any of those issues was not an issue, and I think that would help to provide some transparency.
Sure, I can follow up with that, but generally speaking, when you have changes in working conditions, it requires us to meet and confer. But to that very question, I'll get a more specific answer for you. It doesn't sound like- Uh, but to that very question, I'll get a more specific answer for you. It doesn't sound like Shelley's on the line.
Um, Howard, it's Lainey. I apologize. I was just on the phone with Shelley, and she has confirmed that we could um request the union to come to the table to discuss this. If, if, it's not just meet and confer. It would be an actual negotiation if they are amenable to it. It is um like even if we were to, when the contract opens up, which is relatively soon anyway, would all be subject to arbitration.
Well, Howard, I would recommend that, that some of these issues not wait, you know, I mean, unless we're talking about in a matter of days or, or maybe weeks, but that might even be too long. Some, some of these issues, I think, have risen uh in their seriousness and should be you know, part of a way that we can provide additional transparency and to, to really help tap down some of the emotion that is affecting this country right now and specifically our city.
Okay, we will follow up and we will make that request of um.
Thank you.
Thank you. I got three more members, and I, again, I have some comments. Councilman Sheneer, then Councilman Gueda, then Vice Mayor Harris.
Thanks, Mayor. So, seems to me we have a couple of different issues that we're talking about here, and I want to make sure we don't conflate them. I mean, one is um really responding to the recommendations by the Police Commission and the DOJ. And a lot of that is about operations and how the police department and its officers do their jobs on a daily basis. Um, I think that's a continuing discussion. I appreciate certainly the recommendations that have come, both from DOJ and the Police Commission and the response from the department and um, you know, wanting to make sure that we're continuing to be transparent about the implementation of those recommendations. So I know Deputy Chief Lester, you talked a little bit about that, but can you um really go over again how the public will be able to follow the course of, of implementation on the recommendations?
So regarding, there's two sets of recommendations, actually three. Um, the Department of Justice has two phases. Captain Monk reported on the Phase One recommendations. Um, they just recently released the second phase of recommendations. So what we're doing, um, so that everyone can kind of see where we're at on those, if you go to the transparency website or the transparency page on our website, there's a tab for use of um force recommendations, DOJ recommendations. It lists all of them out, has the link to the report, and it gives a status update on where those are. The commission recommendations are a little bit different because um the commission is a recommending body to mayor and council. Um, and we don't interact directly with them. They come to mayor and council, and then um, you know, direction comes to us in a variety of ways. So at this point, um, we are just publicly responding to the recommendations that were made on July first. Um, however, like all commission meetings, everything is tracked. Um, where the public can watch those meetings live. Um, when we have in-person meetings, they can attend, and then each of the commissioners represents um the council district and can take input from the public as well.
Okay, so I, I want to second Mr. Carr's recommendation that, that you all present to the commission on both these items actually, but specifically on the recommendations. Um, I think it puts them in a better position to support the council and make recommendations to the council if they've heard from you directly rather than through third party. So I want to see if that can be made to happen, and Mr. City Manager, if that's something you can help facilitate. I think that would be great.
Absolutely.
So, and important. Um, so the second piece uh is kind of on process. The second piece really is the, the work that was started on July first, sorry. The work that was uh started on July first around kind of reimagining the police department. And I, I would say it's much larger than that. It's reimagining the services that we provide on the one hand to communities in need and, and also reimagining the, the roles and responsibilities of the police department and the fire department um as we think about appropriate responsibilities. Um, we talked a little bit, or I brought up at that point, kind of getting a six-month update on that. Is that something that is still, I kind of always want to make sure that I'm on the same page as what I think we did? Um, and is that something that we would expect, or is that the next step in that re-imagination? I know you've, you've hired some staff, which is great, um, but moving forward, what does that look like?
Yeah, so the six month is still the target. Now, we've brought on an interim director. You're speaking of um Bridget. And so she's just getting her legs under her, and I'll get a better sense in the coming weeks on what that looks like and when the, the next update will be.
And then within that six months, um, is there a plan, or I, I think there needs to be a plan for public input on what the new department may look like and what their roles and responsibilities should be. Have we gotten to that point, or can we expect to?
So there's a couple of different uh things that are going on. The mayor's hosted a community roundtable to gather some of that input. Um, Bridget uh separately has also been reaching out to community members to get feedback about what the structure of this, you know, um, Office of Community Response looks like. So it's already begun, and it's going to continue throughout this process.
And, and if there are groups um or advocates or individuals who want to make their thoughts known on this, what's the best way for them to interact with the city on this?
Uh, to reach out to, well, reach out to my office, and I'll connect them with Bridget and the team for these uh, their, their weekly meetings. They're probably going to be more frequent than weekly, uh, but uh have them reach out to my office, and I'll coordinate getting them in touch with Bridget.
Okay, so I'm, I'm also going to suggest, um, Mr. City Manager, and I, and I think you're doing a good job on this, but that we work with our PIO to really um get a, a good feeling out in the public about what we're trying to do here so that they can engage. Uh, if we don't do that, then we're defeating a lot of the purpose of what we're trying to do. Um, I think we can always do better on engaging the public. Um, it's not an easy thing sometimes, but this is such an important issue. I think, uh, you know, with, whether it's COVID dollars or whatever, we really need to put an effort uh into that so that we make sure that those who want to provide input along the way are given that opportunity. And they don't really have to like dig for it, but, but it's made pretty apparent to them.
And many other things we can consider is creating a microsite like we did for homelessness. That's kind of a one-stop shop uh to get an update on where we are with, with this.
Okay, well, however, however we can do it, I mean, there are certainly people who are more experienced than I am and, and how you get that word out, but I, it's important. Um, the, the final thing I wanted to say is, you know, and I think this will, I'd like this to come back when we have our next discussion, whether it's in five or six months, however that looks. Um, and as you know, and I've worked with Mr. Conlon on this as well. Um, I've been working with a number of community members and advocates around a, a resolution that defines public safety. Um, I think that the way we traditionally think about public safety is response time for the fire department and number of police per thousand residents for the police. Um, that, that is important, but it doesn't really talk as much about community safety, people feeling safe in their homes and their communities as they should, and it, and it, to me, it doesn't take into consideration uh investing in prevention activities. And I know this will be part of this new department, but I think laying it out through a resolution would be really important. Um, what the work that we've done puts youth at the center of this um in prevention activities. We know it's a lot cheaper to prevent than intervene at a later date. Um, it would urge city government to provide timely, trauma-informed and culturally responsive interventions. Um, there's a number of things that, that I think we can do. And so, Mr. City Manager, what I would like to do is when we come back to start talking about a reimagined department, that we put this uh resolution on the agenda as well, so the council can have a discussion about whether or not they think this should be part of the program as we define uh how we're moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman Sheneer. Uh, Councilman Gueda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, uh, I guess I'll, I'll try to, uh, try to go with the, some of the comments that were presented earlier by uh my colleagues here. Uh, for, on the collective bargaining piece, um, one, uh, I agree that we, we need to have that conversation. They're top of mind for many, many folks. And uh, one thing that I'd like to add there is also the, the, the piece about the ethnic studies course, and I brought that up beforehand. Um, again, this is, this is again, trying to get to the root issues of, of understanding communities and getting beyond policy and, and really into the, uh, into the understanding of communities. Uh, and question for Deputy Chief Lester, I, I have a tough time understanding the rationale be, behind the concern of, of reducing the pool of, of applicants to the department. If it seems to me that the recommendation says that a, that a, uh, that an officer would have two years to complete the course, they didn't have it beforehand as a way to try to, to uh get, get everyone up to speed. And I, I recognize that we have a module already with more hours than most police department on, on understanding communities. But um I think that misses the point of what uh most ethnic studies courses are attempting to do. Uh, along with the same thing with the American Leadership Forum, at the benefit of going through the American Leadership Forum, I really appreciate implicit bias training that they, they do, and they're working with police chief, but I think it still uh is not the same as that. So could you talk a little bit about where, uh, given that scope, why would be impractical?
Well, you know, it's, uh, I don't know that it would necessarily be impractical, and maybe that was my confusion because the original proposal had been to require um ethnic studies courses for all employees that we were um bringing into the agency. But it would, if we were to send um an officer, require an officer or employee to take an ethnic studies class, um, we would have to, by labor law, provide um, you know, funding for the class as well as for the time spent in the class. So I, you know, I, I really understand the concept and kind of where we're trying to get at. I just think maybe there's some options that we could look at that would, um, you know, fulfill the purpose of what the commission is trying to do, but maybe do it a different way. A lot of our employees actually have bachelor's degrees, and as you know, in most bachelor programs, ethnic studies courses are already a requirement. I, I do believe there's a legislative change coming forward in the future requiring that for, um, for undergrads.
That's correct, and but in some cases, we do, uh, we, we do uh recruit officers who may have not gone through a, a state institution um like, like, like a great institution like Sac State, like yourself, you know, uh, but, and which may not require it. I mean, in most, most courses do, mostly, uh, some of the public universities require that. But if someone is coming either uh from out of state, or they went through a private university, or uh, uh, they, they may not have that. So I, I think we really need to uh begin to move forward in that direction. Um, I've got a very strong feeling that most departments will intent, begin to go that direction as time comes by. So I think getting ahead of, of, of us being leaders in this area will be important. Um, and the, the other piece on this uh that I want to, want us to have further, uh, further focus on is the de-escalation conversation. Seems to me that there is still, between the national guidance and even our state guidance, uh, there's a difference in it, uh, in, in the description. Uh, there, you, the, the, what you presented was that the department believes it has a better definition of uh, of uh, of uh, of how to define de-escalation in our policies. But even Phase Two of the Department of Justice recommendations identified uh making this de-escalation an affirmative duty. So I think there, that needs to be a, a specific focus, and I know this was an oral report, but I, I, what would be helpful, at least if, if you could get back at least to my office, and it might be helpful for other offices, is if you use that side-by-side that uh the Chair of the Police Commission used to compare the policies so that we can see them together. Uh, that would be helpful, but I, I do believe de-escalation and even the recent recommendations from the Department of Justice is an affirmative duty. Um, uh, warrant more uh focus on that. Um, the, the other uh piece that I wanted to bring up here, uh, again, uh, it seems to me that there are some very simple, basic things such as uh the, the body camera policies that, that, uh, that uh, that I find that, at least again, from my point of view, if, there should be no reason unless you cannot physically turn it on at the moment to turn on your body camera. So I want to make sure that some of those, I think, very basic ones get, get done. And then lastly, I think the, the review of the general order um uh going to the Police Commission prior to being um implemented, I think is, is, uh, would, would be helpful. I think that is, that's kind of what, why we have a advisory body to begin with is to get points of view. So uh, on that piece, I think that, that would be helpful. Um, and I heard some of my other colleagues talking about that being a, a part of how do we, how do we engage the public and how we move forward? Uh, and to end my comments here, uh, Mr. Mayor, I think, you know, there's the piece about, again, I think Councilmember Sheneer uh defined it well. There's the piece about how we respond to the suggestions from the DOJ and the commission. But the bigger piece is, is how do we address the, the, the issues of investing in communities that COVID has identif- has, has shown to have clear disparities? Uh, over the last two weeks, during this time, the, the, the deaths in the Latino community that have occurred because of COVID uh are, have been pronounced because of the disparities that exist, uh uninsured, housing conditions, the need to work. Um, we had a great report, uh, very thorough report uh from the Black Child Legacy Project and um then, and, uh, and advanced piece that we'll see, I think we're going to talk about later today, how that, that clearly showing that at the beginning of COVID to today, uh, we've seen a dramatic impact on our, on our black youth. And uh, and the only thing that has changed in the last two years has been COVID. So clearly disparities based on race are, are a, a, a key thing. And recently, the Valley Vision uh survey that was done showed clearly that communities, at least in the South Asian community, like in, on Stockton Boulevard, are, are, have a strong fear of being victims also of hate crime. So I think this, again, the continued focus on uh racial equity and ensuring that um that we're addressing investments in those communities is a, 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 a piece that we have to move forward. Uh, so we'll leave that there, and uh, again, thank you for the time for this presentation and for presentation.
Thank you, Councilman Gueda. Vice Mayor Harris, and I'm going to make some comments. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I, I really appreciate the comments of my colleagues, and I agree with virtually everything that they've brought, brought up. I, I see this maybe a little differently. Um, you know, when I look at our police organization, I would say that generally I feel that they're very professional, and they offer us a service that is uh essential to the functioning of the city of Sacramento, but it's not a perfect organization. Most organizations aren't. City council isn't perfect. You know, for any organization to excel, you have to keep reaching uh for improvement. What I see here is that our SAC PD is really amenable to implementing uh the suggestions of the Department of Justice, and I think that's a good thing. So that's on the policy side, but there are, there are two other aspects to uh the question of whether or not our public safety officials are giving us good value. And that has to do with budgetary concerns and discipline concerns. You, you know, when, when you listen to the outcry of the public, uh, they say policy is not enough. Well, policy is a big piece of the puzzle. Uh, you hear defund the police. Certainly, a budget is a big piece of the puzzle. But one thing that doesn't get talked about very often by the city council is the ability to discipline when, say, an officer or somebody in the fire department commits a transgression that is actually a really problematic situation. And common to both of those budgetary and discipline concerns is the concept of binding arbitration. You know, I mentioned this uh in a news article, and it's something I, I've been thinking about quite a bit lately. Uh, if, if we were to actually alter our police budget or our fire budget, or if we were to make serious changes in discipline, we would have to actually scrutinize our position in terms of binding arbitration with our public safety unions. I know that this is a very volatile subject. It's a very hot topic, but I do believe it's one that the, the city council should scrutinize and find out if, if, whether that um uh aspect of our city charter is serving us or not serving us at this point. I'd have to say that my thinking about this is not completely mature at this point, but, you know, I, I really believe that our police organization- But, you know, I, I really believe that our police organization and our fire organization are, are that professional that they are willing to consider being fully accountable for their actions. If, if my belief is correct, then I think that having this discussion is a valuable one moving forward. So I'm going to keep my comments brief. I, I just want to reiterate that I have found our police organization to be valuable, professional, and overall, display a lot of excellence. But there are problems. You know, I had a big problem with the Joseph Mann situation. You know, not everything goes well and the police cannot, cannot foresee every situation. And in fact, it is true that our officers do put themselves in harm's way every day for the greater good of our community. It's a tough job, being a police person or a fire person for that matter, is, is a difficult job and it involves a lot of risk. So we have to strike a balance there. Hopefully in the future, you know, we'll take up the subject and look at it more in depth. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Harris. Couple of comments that I would like to make here. And appreciate a very good and thorough conversation, a couple on process and a couple on substance. When I think about Chair Guerrero's presentation a couple of weeks ago before the city council on behalf of the Police Review Commission, all of the recommendations I, I remember fairly well and a lot of them were definitional. They were important, but definitional around the use of force. But I must say, the one that struck me more than any other recommendation was that recommendation that would require all of our police officers in Sacramento to be students of the racial and ethnic history of our community and of our country. And that recommendation that officers take a college course that would help them understand implicit racism and white fragility and all of the other concepts that are so important in our community and to today's world, I think deserves even more serious consideration than what has been discussed tonight. If it costs Chief Lester a little bit more money to send our officers to ensure that they can take that course, that is money worth spending, maybe more than any other tweaking or definitional issue around the use of force policies. This is at the core of what the public is concerned about and what the public is talking about here in our community. And I agree that there may be many ways to achieve this. But I don't know, for example, I'm very familiar with ALF and, and the implicit bias training. I have not heard a report that every officer in the police department has undergone intensive implicit bias training for the number of hours. I've heard it referred to a lot of times, but I don't know that for a fact. I think this requirement is the most important recommend, this recommendation, the most important recommendation that Mr. Guerrero and this commission has made. And, and then that leads to the process question. What concerns me, and I know we're still evolving and it's a new day and we've got Dr. Watson as the, our new OPSA Director and relationships are sort of forming anew. But what I worry about with all of this is that we never square the circle. You've got the Police Commission recommendations. You have the department's response. You have the city council that weighs in. Yes, we talk about maybe having a portal where the public can follow all of this. But at some point, as Councilman Carr indicated, if we are ultimately accountable, it is up to us to determine what the policy of the city is. So whether it is as part of our use of force policy from a city council, whether it's through the department orders, whether it's based upon the, the Police Commission recommendations or council recommendations or the police department's recommendations, we need a single set of policies that reconcile these various recommendations that we are making and that different people are making. Now, how do we do that? I think Jay Schneer and Councilmember Carr are right that this needs to be presented to the Police Commission. But more than reported to the Police Commission, there needs to be a multi-part effort. And I would start with the Police Commission, with Dr. Watson, with her expertise, with the police department, to try to reconcile these recommendations, just as we ask our staffs to do when it comes to various issues, to reconcile these. And when you agree to disagree in the end, then maybe it's brought to the city council for resolution. But the square, the, the circle needs to be squared here because otherwise we're going to keep churning these sets of recommendations. Because I'm sure that the Police Review Commission listens to this tonight and says, all right, well, this is good. A couple of them, the police department agrees with, a couple of them they disagree with. Again, a lot of them are sort of judgment calls and some of them, as you pointed out, Chief Lester, based upon case law that maybe the commission was or was not aware of. This needs to be all reconciled so we have a single set of policies. Otherwise, the public is going to be frustrated because what is the policy of the city of Sacramento? So I would ask that not only do you report to the Police Commission, but you actually sit down, as you have, with the commission leadership, with Dr. Watson, and we see if we can come to a negotiated agreement here about what, what all of this should look like in the end. The last thing that I want to say is, the last thing that I want to say is that to some of the people who call in, and I know that there are some people that we are never going to satisfy. But I have talked to a number of community activists who have tried to clarify for me what defund the police means. They say it doesn't mean eliminate the police department. It means shifting the funding from the police department to the community in various ways. And I support that idea. But I would urge you, you're welcome to call anytime and to tell us what we are not doing right. We're kind of used to it. But I would also invite you, as Jay Schneer did, invite you actually into the conversation to actually make sure that we follow through and shift funding from the police department to this new office of community response and that we do it in the right way, that is consistent with the values you espouse and, and that I agree with. But you know, if you want to, if you're defining to fund the police, a shifting funding from the police when they don't have to respond to calls that do not involve underlying crime for mental, some mental health calls, for some homeless calls, for some calls that, in categories that the police do not have to respond to and shift the money, then you, you got working partners here at the city. And the police department's rolling up its sleeves as well and getting involved in that. And the, and the city manager's just appointed an interim head to help lead this effort. So beat us up all you like. That's part of the deal here, as Councilmember Carr said, we are accountable. But I invite you to get engaged in this conversation about how we shift this money, the exact thing that you're asking for, in a way that improves public safety and dedicates more money to mental health and the other areas that are so dramatically underfunded. That would be very, not only constructive, it would be very helpful to us. And so this was a very good discussion, but it's not the end of it because we're going to, I'm going to insist that we square the circle here and that the Police Commission now engage again with the police department, that there be the right kind of, you know, constructive, hard conversations about what is and what isn't. We'll hear back from the commission. We'll hear back from the department and we'll all attempt to get on the same page. And where we can't, and the city council is the appropriate arbiter of what the city policy should be, then we'll lay that out too. We'll support our police department. We'll support our police officers, make sure they're safe. We'll also support our community and, and we will lead the change. That's the other thing I want to say about this ethnic studies recommendation. We want to do things that are first in the country. That's what we want to do and we want to be when it comes to smart reform. I don't know that in the department has this requirement that Mr. Guerrero and the Police Commission put forward. If it is unique, the fact that it is unique ought to, ought to motivate us even more to be the first ones to assure that every one of our police officers has read White Fragility, has read, read these books that are so important to, is, towards the understanding, to step in other people's shoes in, in ways that, that, that build bonds in our community. That's what we want. And so I really want to see that recommendation in, in whatever form come back in a most serious way because I think it is a great opportunity. Thank you all very much. We really appreciate it. There's no vote here, right, Madam Clerk?
No, but Mr. Mayor, Deputy Chief Lester has a very quick update. It'll be just a couple of minutes.
Go, go, go ahead, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I've been taking, you know, obviously copious notes and I just wanted to kind of address a few things.
Sure.
Council, Councilmember Guerra raised concern about the affirmative duty to de-escalate. That's actually in our policy and it says, an officer shall employ de-escalation and crisis intervention techniques. It's right in the forefront of our use of force policy. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that. The, the other piece of it is in working with the commission, we have always had a commission member help develop the use of force policy with us. We actually had a use of force policy commission or committee. And we did have a commission member that sat and participated in the design of our new use of force policy, which is very extensive. And I absolutely appreciate the comments about the ethnic studies course. I agree wholeheartedly how important that is and how important it is for our officers and our employees to really be able to relate to the community, understand a lot of the concerns and the issues that are longstanding between law enforcement and members of our community. I do want to point out that Sacramento Police Department was the very first police department in the state of California to bring implicit bias training into our agency and have that incorporated into the state curriculum. So all agencies have a component of implicit bias training. We also are only the second after San Francisco to deliver post-approved gender awareness training to our officers. And all of our officers have been through procedural justice training in addition to a lot of our other trainings. And one of the most unique programs I think we do is a program that was designed by Chief Hahn and it's called the Walk in My Shoes Program where we partner a police officer, a new police officer with a member of the community. And they spend the day together to talk about issues in the community, concerns, and really develop that partnership. So that's sort of the hands-on training that I think has been really valuable in addition to a lot of the educational requirements because it gets officers out into the community, helps build relationships and really gets them to see things from the community members' perspective. So I just wanted to share that before we closed. And I will get the, the policy comparisons to Councilmember Guerra's office this week.
Thank you. Chief, Chief Lester, by the way, you do an outstanding job. This is really, and the fact that you're on this is really, I think, important to all of us. I just want us, we just want to lead the way in doing what others are not doing to even deepen our officers' commitment and understanding to the issue of our time. That's the point.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Very, very good. That's, that, that wraps up this item. Let's move to the final item of the evening, which is a, a report back from the community and the city on issues relating to gang intervention and, and all of the strategies and programs that are being employed. I, I want to say that right from the beginning, just so I kind of give people a roadmap here as we, as we open up the discussion, that I know I've been working with the city manager and members, especially Councilmember Rick Jennings, who has really been our city's elected leader on these sets of issues with great passion and effectiveness. I've been working with Councilmember Jennings and the community today about how to reconcile the various proposals that are out there and how we might actually land the plane, so to speak, with direction tonight and get that, and get really moving with some action. And so after the presentations about what is sort of on the table, I would like to kind of lay that out with, with Mr. Hewitt or, or any of the other community leadership, in addition to Councilmember Jennings, all right? How are we going to start this tonight? Rick?
So, so Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
Tonight, we're going to meet our community partners. It's an opportunity for them to come to the table. At our last meeting before we went on vacation, it became apparent to me that our community partners who are doing hard work out there in the city have not had an opportunity to talk to the council about the work that they're doing. So tonight, not only will you meet the community partners, but you'll learn more of the work that they're doing every single day. You'll gain a better understanding of their goals, their mission, their strategies, their objectives, and you'll get a better idea on the, the gaps and services that, that they need to try to close in order to continue to do the work that they're doing. And then we at least need to talk about, from a process standpoint, how often should they come back and report back to us so that there's some level of accountability and we don't have to question all the time about the work that they're doing? So tonight, you'll get a better understanding of that work, this valuable work that they're doing. And then I want to make sure that we talk about the short-term needs that they have and then talk about sustainable needs that they have in, going forward in the future. How do we sustain it so we're not having these conversations on a regular basis? Because we built in the sustainability by determining every year what we're going to do. So that's kind of like, in a summary, the introduction of what we're doing with the Black Child Legacy Campaign and the Advanced Peace Progress Report and all the partners that you're going to meet from Always Knocking to Black Child Legacy, to Brother to Brother, the Big Homies, Growing Oak Park, Healing the Hood, and I could go on and on and on, but I'm not going to do that. I'm going to let them start their report. They have an incredible PowerPoint that they are going to present with all the community leaders that are going to be presenting it. So I'll turn the, the microphone over to them for them to start their presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. This is Chet Hewitt. I'm going to kick off the conversation. Just want to check to make sure that you can all hear me as well.
We can. Can. We sure can.
I want to start by making a special thanks to Councilman Jennings for his work with our group over the past several weeks. We have definitely appreciated the conversations, the tough conversations, but productive conversations we have had with you. So we want to say thanks. I also want to offer, offer my opening remarks in tribute to C.T. Vivian and John Lewis, two social justice and equity icons who reminded us this week on their passing, but who remind us to do good work even when it causes discomfort or trouble. Good trouble, as the great John Lewis used to say. And so today, we're going to hopefully get into a little bit of good trouble and advance the conversation about violence and violence interruption work here in the city. I want to start by making it clear that the participants in today's presentations are committed to working in partnership to prevent, intervene, interrupt the surge in violence we are experiencing here in Sacramento. And we know there's not simply a Sacramento issue. We're seeing surges in violence in cities across this nation. Many of us have been doing so for some time and agree and acknowledge that we are at a critical juncture with regard to this work as we struggle through the social, economic, behavioral health and clinical health challenges the pandemic has wrought, particularly in black and brown and other communities of color. Councilman Guerra, we appreciate your remarks early to this point as well. Second, the proposals being discussed here today are the results of numerous conversations with elected and appointed officials. And while there appears to be some concern about how they all fit together, I want to ensure the members of this body that they are requested for support to strengthen collaborative work and that is to allow people to be better at working across the silos, both geographic silos, population groups within their violence interruption, intervention and prevention work itself. An individual, an individual organization's infrastructure, that is to make those organizations strong on their own so they are also stronger members of a collaborative. Both are necessary. And that we should discuss this in further detail, if not today, but at some point in the very near future, if we hope to be successful. And then finally, I want to underscore the urgency of this body's approval of this work moving forward. Last night, we lost another young person to gun violence in this city. So I want to urge you to act with the speech and deliberation you would act if it was your loved ones who are living in harm's way. Numerous social scientists and researchers agree. That while it's appropriate to focus on the physical needs caused by COVID-19, healthcare, housing, food and work, rightly so. But the issues that are likely to have the most long-term effect will be the emotional, mental trauma. We will all carry for some time into the future, particularly if we fail to address the growing levels of violence in our communities today. There are parents who will lose children, siblings who will lose brothers and sisters. Grandparents who will lose grandchildren. And we know because of past success in this city where we have significantly reduced gun and other type of violence. That we can do more, need to do so now. I'm going to stop there and I'm going to turn it over to folks who will be working through a slide deck for presentation. And I believe the next two presenters are Mervyn Brookins from Brother to Brother. Julius Tippodle from Advanced Peace. Julius, on the screen.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers and the executive staff. Can, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
You can hear me? Okay, great. All right, sorry for the lack of video. I'm having a little technical difficulty here, but. I just wanted to thank each of you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight to express my complete support. For funding the Black Child Legacy Campaign. As I'm sure each of you would agree, the challenges that confront our city are multifold and therefore requires a multi-passionate approach. And there is no better equipped nor structured organization to meet this challenge than the BCLC. Particularly with respect to the gang violence going on within the city right now. The interwoven network of gangs mandates an equally interwoven network approach and BCLC has that network. They're already embedded in every target community and have the right community partners to get the job done. So on behalf of Brother to Brother, I want to state that we stand with the Black Child Legacy Campaign. And its efforts to help our community heal and we hope that you will too. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Councilmembers. This is Julius Tippodle, Strategy Program Manager for Advanced Peace. I'd just like to start by saying and making the direct connection to COVID-19. What we have put together under the Healing the Hood project here. Is, is a collaborative and a collective that has already proven to, to have achieved historical accomplishments. In the city of Sacramento, that we really want to be acknowledged. And that we really want to show that how we've come together, how we work together to accomplish these feats. By working in unison. With Healing the Hood, Advanced Peace, Brother to Brother, Always Knocking. The services that we provide for these young people are, are services that they were deprived of and have been historically deprived of. Throughout this, throughout this entire, uh, this pandemic, before the pandemic. And I think one of the most important things that we want to impress upon you is, is that we were on pace to continue. What, two consecutive years of no juvenile homicides. Uh, that's something that we've done as a collective. Also the fact that we have reached numbers of reducing guns, gun assaults and gun homicides. By nineteen percent, actually twenty-one percent in three of the Advanced Peace, Advanced Peace, uh, targeted neighborhoods of Del Paso Heights. Oak Park and South Sacramento. One of the things that, uh, I, I really want us to point to. Is the fact that a lot of the things that we were providing, the services that we providing for our young people. They were discontinued because of COVID-19. Prior to COVID-19, we didn't see a uptick in, uh, gun violence. And so with that being said, I think it's also very clear that the fact that COVID-19 blindsided us. The, the stay-at-home orders, the fact that you had people confined to quarters. And, and not being able to come out due to the, uh, stay-at-home orders and the social distancing. I think this clearly exacerbated what was already, uh, a pandemic in itself. Of us, the, the fight we were having against gun violence. So I think what we haven't had the opportunity to do and that I'm glad that we have the opportunity to do tonight. Is to show you the collective body of work and how we are working together. I think a lot of us. A lot of you council members didn't really know how Healing the Hood, the collaborative, how all the different CBOs were working together in unison. To, uh, to accomplish these great feats in reducing gun violence with very little funding. And so with that being said, I pray that, uh, I pray that you can recognize that that simple, that simple thing. That we were working together, we were, uh, putting a dent in reducing gun violence in this epidemic itself. And that we can continue to do this if we continue to invest in our young people. And I'll close with, it is clear that with that investment, our young people were making much better decisions. And that has been disrupted and it's clear that they are no longer making the decisions that they were. And you have young people making bad decisions now and it's costing people their lives.
Kendra?
Who's next?
Dr. O? Yes, I am hoping that I can share my screen right now. Okay. That screen. And give me a thumbs up if you can hear me and see my screen. All right, there we go. Um, so good evening, uh, councilmembers and, you know, the very esteemed staff of. Uh, the city of Sacramento and Chet and Mervyn and Julius for doing that opener. We really are here today to say to you, Mr. Mayor and the rest of the city council members. That you have been first in the country, that we are, um, really presenting and ensuring a unique collaborative around. Violence prevention and intervention and interruption. And because of the size of our city. And, um, our opportunity to come together, we have at the top. For over two years, over thirty months, uh, again, zero juvenile homicides in the city of Sacramento. And want to be able to talk to you about how we were able to respond to 2017's uptake. Again, with that response in 2018 and 2019 was zero juvenile homicides. The first thing that you should know is that the Black Child Legacy Campaign and the Healing the Hood Initiative is. Um, again, our, what we call our, our third-party homicide strategy. In our strategic approach and our collective impact in the Black Child Legacy Campaign. We really are working on an infrastructure that looks, um, just like this. There are seven neighborhoods, Valley High, Arden Arcade, Del Paso Heights, Oak Park, Fruit Ridge, I'm sorry. North Highlands Foothill Farms, Fruit Ridge Stockton Boulevard and Meadowview, all led by separate CBOs. South Sacramento Christian Center, Mutual Assistance Network, Roberts County Development Center. The Greater Sacramento Urban League, Liberty Towers Church. The Center for Community Health and Wellbeing and the Building Healthy Communities Collaborative. And then focus, I'm sorry, the Rose Family Creative Empowerment Center. And we have been and our goal has always been to reduce preventable African-American child deaths by ten to twenty percent by the year 2020. And we have accomplished that goal, um, both admirably and with a lot of hard work. And the part of the way that we've been able to do that, um, is by serving young people, creating multiple levels of partners. And we have quality dimensions that we are running and, um, connecting the dots and assessing all the time. Seven neighborhoods, five strategies, four issue areas and one steering committee that again is led. Um, by, um, the Steering Committee on the, on the Reduction of African-American Child Death. Which is a committee that is directly advisory to the Sacramento County Board. Gets, which is our five-year annual report. Um, this working infrastructure, not only do we have these CBOs. But the county of Sacramento has come alongside and outstationed social workers, probation officers. Eligibility workers, some set of workers, um, and first five hoteling and even pregnancy coaches. In each one of these community-based organizations and we call them the multidisciplinary team. So. Any family can walk in these doors and, um, receive services by collection of community-based folks and outstationed county staff. To be able to support that family both individually and, um, provide wraparound services. Across the city, um, we have been able to do this, uh, for over five years. The key here, we have a lot of ABCs and one-two-threes, but I want to make sure you all see this key. Um, and how we, well, we, we're going to go through this, this presentation. The seven incubator leads are called CILs, Community Incubator Leads. We call our multidisciplinary teams MDTs and we call our Healing the Hood Community Incubator, I'm sorry. Our Healing the Hood Community Intervention Workers, CIWs. And again. Um, in 2017, when we saw that uptake in violence, we pivoted quickly to, um, a grant by the Board of State and Community Corrections here in California. To absolutely target, um, and invest in working with the youngest of the young people and professionalizing street outreach workers. Over the past two years with over eighty hours of training, we've been to Chicago, we've been to Houston and we've been to LA. We brought back those best of the best of gang prevention trainings and we've created our own, um, what we call Healing the Hood Professional Development Piece. Again, that continues to work around professionalizing street outreach work in each one of these neighborhoods. So where are we at and just what, um, the impact of the Black Child Legacy Campaign has been able to have. On the four preventable causes of African-American child death. There are four issues that we are consistently working on at all times. Again, you'll see here that our goal. Is to reduce those preventable death rates by ten to twenty percent by year 2020. But this particular, um, dashboard, um, slides really shows is that as soon as we started working, we've been able to really see. That reduction. Um, and by 2017, we've not only hit that, um, mark out of the park. But we've actually been able to reduce those preventable deaths by twenty-five percent. So you say, how have you been doing that? How, how does that work? Again, I go back to that infrastructure. Being able to provide wraparound services, not just to, um, individuals, but to whole families. And really changing the way that the, um, county social service safety net is implemented deep into neighborhoods with trusted messengers. When it comes to the each of the four issues of causes of death, we've seen, um, a range of, 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 uh, reduction. And I invite you to continue to look through this slide. Um, we've got a lot of local movement, community building, a lot of ways that we engage young people. We have many different levels of system wins. Um, from your initial investment in 2016 of, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand. We continue to leverage those and grow our investment again to put that, those dollars deep into the neighborhoods that we discussed. North to south, east to west. Uh, we also have ongoing capacity and training. We take our trainings very seriously. Those professional development opportunities, uh, to build the field, um, and grow our capacity to serve young people. Uh, children and their families, um, like never before in these neighborhoods. And our results on this particular dashboard really speak to that. So what makes us so effective across all of this work? The first you should know is that we're working across lines. We're not just serving black kids. We're serving all kids. And when we say that there has been zero juvenile homicides, that's not just for black kids. That's for all kids. And prior to April 2020, we really were working, um, and, you know, removing roadblocks. Making sure that we weren't just training African-Americans that were industry outreach work, but we have trained La Familia, Asian Resources, E-Basis. You name it. Uh, we have not only trained folks, but have made sure that they can be compensated for the community intervention work. Um, and trainings that we have had and feel really great about that. And our results talk about and show. That you can professionalize street outreach work in ways that have never, um, been done in Sacramento before. This also include Advanced Peace and Brother to Brother and, um, Always Knocking and Mothers of 95838. The list can go on and on about folks that we continue to wrap our arms around and bring into the fold around. Exactly what you're talking about, Mr. Mayor, understanding the, the cultural and ethnic needs of communities. And making sure that everyone has a specific lane to operate in. As we begin to really think about what is causing violence, what are those root causes of violence? And how do we create, um, a process to heal families? Um, and again, um, build trusted leaders and community buy-in and ultimately save lives. So what has the, the results really boded for when we start to talk about the economic impact? My colleague, Dr. Um, Ijoma Ojunju, we call him Dr. O, who is the CIL Lead for the Roberts Family Development Center. Is going to break down what is not only the cost analysis of youth homicides. But what have the city, um, been saved, been saving because of our very bold and ambitious work? But also, um, what you can expect if we do not do anything today. And so Ijoma?
Yeah, appreciated, Kendra, uh, Mayor, Council. Uh, the screen that you see before you gives you, uh, an idea of what the impact has been over the last five years. So 2014, our rolling three-year average was four and a half youth homicides, youth being zero to eighteen, uh, per year. 2015 is when we implemented Black Child Legacy Campaign and you see an immediate forty percent reduction. Followed by a thirty-three percent duck, reduction the following year. 2017, we did have a spike in youth homicides. But 2017 is, is our response to that was the Healing the Hood Initiative. And again, as we've been, uh, saying throughout the presentation, we had zero homicides in 2018 and 19, which led to a thirty-one percent and eighteen percent. Three-year rolling average reduction. Uh, this translates to, next slide, please. This translate to, uh, saving of, uh, a minimum savings of fifteen point one million dollars over the. Five-year span that Black Child Legacy has been, uh, in service. And so we looked at the National Institute of. Criminal Justice Reform to get the number of two point five million dollars per homicide, per one suspect. These numbers were looked at, uh, in Stockton, California, San Bernardino, California and Fresno, California. Um, and so we use those numbers to estimate what the cost is. The cost including criminal justice costs, uh, crime scene investigation, uh, victim support, hospitalizations. Tax revenue, uh, and a few others there. Next slide, please. So in addition to the zero homicides and reduction in youth homicides, in overall homicides, uh, the city has experienced a twenty-one percent reduction. Over the last four years, uh, in 2015, we were at forty-three, uh, homicides per year. Last year we had thirty-four homicides and this has been widely, uh, reported in, in our news outlets. Next slide, please. Uh, the economic savings in 2019 alone was twenty-one million dollars. Uh, next slide, please. This is important, uh, as we look at the impact of COVID-19. So I wanted to just, uh, point out that we looked at these numbers as of last week, but as we've said earlier in the presentation, we have had. A number of homicides just within the last seven days, the most recent coming with an eighteen-year-old last night. Uh, in the southern side of our city. And so 2019, July fifteenth, 2019, we're at nineteen homicides. Uh, we're already here at around thirty-five, thirty-six homicides. That's a significant, about an eighty-four percent increase year over year. Next slide, please. That translates into a minimum of a thirty-five million dollar economic cost as it relates to homicides in the city. And, and keep in mind. We're looking at this cost as if everything was equal, but when you take into account the loss of revenue as it relates to COVID-19, right? This thirty-five million really impacts a lot harder, hits a lot harder than it would if everything was, was, uh, status quo. Next slide, please. Uh, again, if we project out through, through, through 2020 and we don't make any adjustments. We're looking at a minimum of twenty-five more homicides this year than we had in 2019. I know you can't predict necessarily the number of homicides, but what I'm saying is, is. But what I'm saying is, is if we look at the rate, and the rate has been pretty consistent, right? We understand for the last four years, we've had a reduction in homicides. And then all of a sudden, this year, we've had an increase. And we're on a pace to even eclipse the numbers that we were at in two thousand fourteen, two thousand and fifteen. Next slide please. The economic cost of not doing anything would be that we're looking at a sixty-two million dollar hit to the city because of the increase in homicides that we're projecting out over the course of twelve months. Again, we can't just look at this number in isolation. We have to think about this number in relation to the loss of revenue that the city is already going to experience because of COVID nineteen. So when you take into account the loss of revenue and you take into account the increased economic cost of homicides, right? This number really is going to impact like eighty to a hundred million as opposed to the sixty-two million dollar price tag that we're looking at.
And so next, we would like Dr. Flo just to be able to talk to us about the public health expense and community violence and really the root causes.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me this evening. I really wanted to come and talk about the importance of looking at, you know, our investments through a public health lens. And if we, if we really think about this, the root causes of violence are essentially threefold, right? One is poverty, and in particular systemic poverty. Another is institutional neglect, and then of course, there's the generational trauma. And what's happened during this year is that we have made all of the root causes of violence even worse. They have, none of them have gotten better. And if we think of it as people who were already sort of in a hole and then the bottom falls out of that hole, it's not just enough to repair the part that, you know, when the bottom fell out. You also are still, we're in the process of trying to dig people out of the hole. And if you're going to do repair, you also have to think about what happens when the bottom falls out in terms of, were you injured in the process? And so what we recognize is that the poverty, the intergenerational trauma and the institutional neglect have been made worse this year. And the results are exactly what Dr. O just explained, that so much of these underlying conditions that cause violence are now worse. And so it's rightly so that many of the folks who have been on this call have been, been asking for a while for increased resources because it was predictable and knowable that we were going to see an uptick in violence in the same way that it was predictable and knowable that we were going to see an uptick in, in domestic violence. That we were going to see, you know, some changes in the patterns of our behavior as a result to our response to COVID as well as the, the COVID pandemic. And so one of the things I think is really important for us to remember is that there are ways in which, you know, our investments in the entire city have an impact. And so what we're talking about here is the idea that, you know, some of the things that were part of the promise of Measure U were things that really could have helped to stabilize communities. When we're talking about the bond that unfortunately will unlikely happen now because of the city's changed credit rating. You know, affordable housing and homelessness are part of those core needs and may address that systemic poverty. When we think about, you know, economic development, which was the major promise of the second half cent, you know, that money being available to be able to bolster communities is exactly what's needed now. And not just the CARES Act dollars, but actually having a regular revenue source to be able to address some of the historic traumas and harms that have been discussed earlier when we were having the conversation about policing and what's needed to understand what's happened in this country and how it has a long-lasting and ongoing impact on communities. And then even when we think about some of the monies that have gone up, even out of the Measure U budget in terms of youth parks and community enrichment, we see that violence prevention really only got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, even though the Ipsy budget has gone up with the second half cent to, to comprising seventeen percent of the fund. And what we see unfortunately is that the, the dollars have largely been invested in our police department, even when the promise was that they were going to be flat funded. And that really presents major concerns because the folks who are on the call tonight are talking about the preventive work that they do. The things that we do not to respond to emergencies, but to make sure they don't happen in the first place. And they have been wildly successful in ways that they're in some ways being too modest about the impact that they've had on our budget and on our community in terms of having two years without having any juvenile homicides in the city of Sacramento. A feat that has never before been achieved, except in partnership with the organizations that are on this call. And so we need to recognize that there were recommendations made to this council in March from the Management Partners Organization as part of the city's efficiency study. Recommendations thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-nine were all supported by the, the Human Resources Department, the Finance Department, and even Councilmember Jeff Harris tonight supported, supported recommendation number thirty-nine. And those are all ways where if in total, if all thirty-nine of those recommendations were put into place, the city could save almost eighty million dollars. So the request to be able to support these programs, both right now for the next six months and in an ongoing way, those funds exist. And if we really double down on the ways in which we cannot, not only cut down on the waste that exists within the, the city's expenditures, but also on, really thinking about what our priorities are, will be a much better place to be able to have a safe community. And I think that's really what we're talking about here when we're, when we're really having this conversation about how we invest and what the public health cost of this is. It's investing in prevention. It's making sure that we are spending our funds as efficiently as possible. Last night at the Measure U meeting, the police department came and they shared some of their expenditures. And one of the things that stood out is that they don't have a presentation like this. They could not explain to us what the goals of the Measure U money were and how they had actually been filled, what those evaluation metrics were, and were we actually getting the safety outcomes that we wanted? And one of our duties as the Measure U Committee is to make advice to, to provide advice to the council and to the mayor on how their, how the funds could be better spent towards the goals of the city. And so we've seen that tonight with these violence prevention providers of what they've done, what the impact has been, and what they could do with additional resources, given that the conditions have been exacerbated. And so, you know, here in strong support of the idea that not only the what they're doing, but also the fact that these funds do exist in our budget and we have a responsibility to spend them efficiently in order to make sure that the funds are available for the things that we have demonstrated evidence do work.
Thanks Flo. Next, we have Ms. Jackie and Advance Peace and Voice of the Youth and Valley High. Ms. Jackie really talking about Meadowview.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council members for allowing us to come before you tonight to talk about our program. I'm going to be talking about the day in the life of a CIW, which is a community intervention worker. When we get these referrals for, for participants from Healing the Hood, we get a lot of our referrals from Sacramento County Probation, Sacramento City Unified School District Hearing and Placement Office, our Youth Development Office, schools principals, and our student support teams. Now, we also have engaged in making sure that our schools in the north area are included in this as well. But we have a really close relationship with Sacramento City Unified School District in the south part of town. Our CIWs actually do intakes and assessment, which we have all of our participants that are part of a database that is called the Healing the Hood Database. And assessments are done on these young people monthly. Most of these young people are actually given a questionnaire to ask them about how they're feeling, what they're doing. And we sit down and we work with their parents and guardians to make sure that they are included in this. My belief is that, and it always has been in the work that I've done for over thirty years in this city, is that you cannot do anything without parents being involved. They have to be at the table. They have to be part of the process. So we just don't case manage, the CIWs just don't case manage the young person. We also send those parents on the BCLC side so they can be case managed and receive those really important wraparound services. We also build agreements up with these young people where we come up with action plans on their schooling, on their participation in activities in the community. So we can really look at what's, and also what they're doing at home. We again provide wraparound services for these young people. If a participant comes from our probation department, we handle, we actually follow the probation officer's minute order, where that minute order is a court ordered plan that actually comes up with specific things that that young person is supposed to, to, to follow, such as anger management, community service, parenting classes, drug and alcohol counseling, and just being enrolled in school, which is really, really important to cutting down crime. Our CIWs attend court hearings with the participant and/or the parents, as well as making sure that we are referring them to the necessary county services so they can get the resources that they desperately need. We have a partnership with Sacramento City Student and Hearing and Placement Department, where they also make referrals over to us from their behavior hearings. We attend SA, that, that CIW attends SSTs and IEPs at the school for the participants. We do a lot of things via phone calls. We haven't had lots of face-to-face, so we're using Zoom to make sure that we're communicating with that fifteen of the, the most high-risk young people here on our caseloads. We do a lot of leadership development with these young people, as well as making sure that they are involved and also just taking them out of the community so they can see something different. Again, I will emphasize, I cannot overemphasize the importance of meeting with parents and making sure that the parenting guardian is at the table and offering them additional supports for themselves and other members of the families. We again do a lot of follow-up. That database that the Healing the Hood, all seven neighborhoods participates in, has a lot of measurable results that we all have to follow step by step. So that CIW is doing all of those kinds of things to make sure that this young person is wrapped around. And then last but not least is celebrations. We do a lot of celebrate, braiding with these young people, celebrating their milestones, celebrating when they completed a class, celebrating when they have been, and then setting up some rewards to make sure that those things are in place. And then we assess and reassess all of the things that they're doing and making sure that they're connected with opportunities like our pop-ups and them having opportunities and a lot of our community-based organizations to work with us. And just making sure that they are wrapped around completely. And outside of all of the things that I just mentioned, the CIWs also work on crisis response as well. So there's a lot of things that go in the day in the life of a CIW, but that's just some of the things that they do, and that's an overview. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jackie. Wonderful.
Next, we have Pastor Les and just talking about how we've had to pivot, pivot since March twentieth to also provide COVID nineteen response across our city and accounting.
Great. It's good to see you all, Mr. Mayor and City Council, City Manager, and glad to know you all are safe, you all are healthy during these challenging times. As you all know, both when COVID hit and the shelter in place order hit, in many of our communities, we were challenged with finding access to food. Actually, right before it hit, there was one grocery store in South Sacramento that closed down. So right away, we knew we needed to scale up both our outreach to receive food and then our ability to deliver it both to the vulnerable population and then to our BCLC network, and then also to everyone else in the community. Just last week, we served over nineteen hundred people within our food distribution line, over four hundred and, four hundred and sixty-four families. We delivered to over sixty-four individuals that are above sixty-five. In many cases, not only are we serving those within our community and our network, but we're serving those in other cultures as well. Actually, in many cases, ninety percent, just like last week, ninety percent of the folks that came through our drive-through line were in the Vietnamese, Southeast Asian community as well. So we're not only able to reach our community and vulnerable communities, we're able to reach every culture within our network. In addition to that, we knew right away we needed to scale up the ability and access for free PPE. So right from day, March, the first or second week of March when COVID hit, we began to make masks, we began to distribute masks. Every week, we distribute well over a thousand masks within our network for free to our community. We knew that we needed our CIWs. We knew our cultural brokers that were going to be empowered during COVID to be able to get in front of this and really stipend what the spread of the virus could do if our folks didn't have access to these things. In addition to that, we knew we needed to scale up access to testing. So we started our, what we call Test for the People, and we made, we've made that available free testing site, although it's not in its, you know, it's to us, I think it definitely needs some expansion to it. But because of COVID, we knew our cultural brokers, our CIWs, our peacekeepers had direct reach to our community and were able to get in front of both the challenges around violence, the challenges around food, and the challenges around the spreading of the virus. And as a result, we continue to do that. As I said before, just this past weekend, we served well over nineteen hundred people came through our food distribution. And we've continued to do that. Now we're week, I think we're in week eighteen or nineteen with our food program. We know that our network is that vulnerable population, folks that don't necessarily get up to go to stand, stand in a food line. People that, they need that extra support. All seven of our CIWs, all seven of our community incubator leads are, are able to reach that population and reach our network to be able to bring that, that life support during this kind of pandemic that we're in. We'll continue to do that. But again, thank you guys for the support and thank you for this time.
Next, we have Kim Williams with our South Area Hub.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. You know, I'm going to talk about our partnerships. I think as you've heard, all this amazing work that you've heard so far, none of this could, would even be possible if it wasn't for the strong partnerships that we all have with each other as CILs, but also the partnerships we have within our CILs. With each CIL having a, a lead staff person, but also having an MDT team as well, and then having the organizations that support the work. When, when any of our CILs are having, you know, families referred to us immediately when that family's referred to us, we do what's called an assessment, a referral comes through, we do an assessment. The MDT team comes together to acknowledge what are the issues that this family may have. And then immediately, partners are called to say, hey, we have a family, they're young, they have a son who might be in some behavior issues. We need to get him in a program. Or we have someone who's having struggles with school, we need to call the school district to find out what we need to support them there. We may have a mom who's pregnant and is in need of supports. Then we have programs that are supporting our African-American pregnant moms to make sure that they have healthy babies. All of these partnerships are crucial to the work. And as, as things begin to shift, all these, all the interactions and things that we were having literally were face-to-face interactions. And when COVID nineteen hit, all of that had to change. And so our partners had to shift to determine how are we going to continue serving families to the best of our ability, even though we can't see them and interact with them face-to-face. And so, you know, they were able to shift and say, okay, we're going to do interactions via Zoom. We're going to start making sure, we had one of our, my CIW, two of her caseloads tested positive for COVID. And so there are still children in that home that needed to be fed. It was single-parent households. How are we going to help make sure that the family had what they needed? And so we were able to put the call out to get the food, to make sure things could be delivered so that they would be okay. Making sure that everybody is accounted for. So whether we're calling people, our, our, her Health First, who does a lot of our work with our pregnant moms, you know, having to teach moms how to take care of their babies and be, and be ready for delivery is a challenge in of itself. And how to do that using Zoom, but they have found ways to be able to do that and make sure that those weekly contacts are happening and those parents, those moms are still feeling supported. And making sure that our children are still feeling supported. I think if we can, as, as we talk about the uptick in violence that we've had, literal, literally, when, when that crisis hits, we get that phone call and you'll see later on in the presentation, kind of like our org chart around it. But immediately that call goes out and that CIW is on point, whether they're going to a crime scene or whether they're going to a hospital, whatever other issues are happening in that family, those referrals are being made back to the MDT teams. So we are wrapping around the entire family. Every single time one of these incidents happens, there are people who are right there, front and center. We get on the phone, we call Advance Peace, they're right there. We get on the phone, we call, you know, I call Ms. Rose and say, hey, this is, I need this. She's right there. Pastor Les, this is what I need. She's right there. If it's a family in the middle of another CIL, we determine who's best capable to cover that family, and we do that. And I think this has, this has built up over the last several years. And I think this has, this has built up over the last several years, but the reason why we're able to do the work that we do is because we have the strong partnerships, we have the relationships, we have the trust in our communities. And as things have begun to change and as COVID has completely changed how we do the work, it's because of those relationships and partnerships that we're still fighting every day to make sure that our families are getting the best possible care that we can provide for them.
Thank you, Kim. Next, we have Danielle Lawrence in the Arden Arcade, um, Del Paso Heights and the Hill Farms North Area Hub.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you, um, to talk about our North Area collaboration. My name is Danielle Lawrence, and I'm with Mutual Assistance Network, and we were asked to speak tonight on the behalf of our collective efforts of our implemented strategies towards the Black Child Legacy Campaign's Healing the Hood Violence, Interruption and Intervention Efforts in North Sacramento. Our North Sacramento Collaborative is comprised of our partners and friends at Roberts Family Development Center, who serves as the leading CIL in Del Paso Heights, Liberty Towers, um, leading as the incubator in North Highlands and Phil Hill Farms, and then ourselves, leading, um, community crisis response efforts in Arden Arcade. Um, we think it's important to first highlight that the disparities of death inflicted on our black communities across Sacramento County are preventable and directly correlate with the historical perpetuation of institutional racism and anti-blackness that shows up as economic disinvestment, misallocation of public funds, state sanctioned violence at the hands of law enforcement, racist policies and practices. And there is also a history of centering and funding of white-led organizations tasked to serve and support black indigenous communities of color, um, who historically and continually fall short in moving the needle forward, yet continue to be overfunded. You now have the opportunity to hear about organizations rooted in the community, most affected and ran by people of color who have the license to operate and really make positive change. I will ask my colleague and man director over the Black Child Legacy Program in Arden Arcade, Heather Gonzalez, to elaborate more on what the North Area Collaborative has been up to over the past few years. Heather?
Hello. Good afternoon or evening, everyone. Uh, thank you, Ms. Danielle. Uh, the Black Child Legacy Campaign and the Healing the Hood Initiative has proven to be effective in moving, moving the needle forward in addressing these targeted and preventable health disparities impacting our black families across Sacramento County. The system has, in fact, created the very conditions that are root cause of these public health issues, and we ask that you invest in community-led solutions, invest equitably, and invest urgently as our community is in crisis and we are centuries late in an effective response and at this time for unapologetic and urgent action. Although we are in a youth violence crisis and the catalyst was COVID nineteen, it's important to note that we are seeing a similar trend across the nation. Uh, this time in history is a reckoning for all of us, and we have to look deep and consider where we invest, how we invest, and how our actions and financial investments determine our true values. The three incubator leads in the north have combined efforts and developed an across-neighborhood coordinated strategy of communication, crisis response support, comprehensive resource sharing, and sharing of networks to bridge the systemic gaps to impact, or to maximize, excuse me, our impact. Anytime that there's a shooting in one of the three identified neighborhoods in the north, the neighborhood lead is contacted either by way of our crisis response coordinators, law enforcement, or the community directly. We're on standby twenty-four-seven across neighborhoods, um, and we're on call anytime that there's a shooting for additional support and, and the leading neighborhood, um, C, uh, CIL, excuse me, will respond to the scene within thirty minutes of notification to get to work. Our teams wrap around the families and the victims to support and meeting immediate needs, whether it be food, water, or blankets on the scene. We sit with the families and we walk them through their options while breaking down how to navigate the situations they're faced with through a responsive and trauma-informed approach. The unfortunate reality, however, is that sometimes lives are lost, and there really aren't any words that can take that pain away, but what we can do is walk with our families through that process hand-in-hand so that figuring out what's next is not an additional burden to them. We provide intensive case management support, we help with planning funerals, making final arrangements, supporting in obituaries, connecting the essential formal and informal services and support such as mental health and grief counseling for youth directly impacted by violence, as well as the family and wraparound support. Each CIL has, as mentioned, a multidisciplinary team that provides additional support and access to major systems such as DHA, CPS, and probation. Having these identified, uh, formal liaisons at the table allows us to minimize barriers in connecting our families to much-needed services and to maximize their success in securing resources and supports. Our North Area Collaborative continues to meet regularly and is building our own network of allies in the north. We're deepening our relationships and strategies with Well Spaces Cal VIP Program, Brother to Brother, Advanced Peace, UC Davis Trauma Center, um, to strengthen and deepen our base. The immediate community-led crisis response efforts, prevention programs, wraparound services, intensive case management, connection to resources, advocacy, and navigation support are essential components to our work. And we would just want to thank you all for your support thus far, and we hope that we've demonstrated our collective eff- effectiveness tonight, and we look forward to your continued support and investment. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Next, council members, um, I would just like to show you really quickly our incident's response flow chart. We take this work very seriously, and we are all, when in fact, um, a gun, um, uh, crisis or violence, uh, incident happens, there are multiple ways that that family comes to us. Um, but I would like to just make sure you understand that not only are we identifying young people, getting referrals, putting them into a pathway of prevention or intervention in case management, but when that incident happens, there are a team of folks that respond both at the crime scene and at South Sacramento Kaiser and/or at UC Davis. And so always knocking, could not do this work without, um, the leadership of Mr. King, Mothers of Nine Five Eight Three Eight, UC Davis, Kaiser, Well Space, and their, um, Violence Intervention Program. Uh, Mike Flair, um, I, I would also, um, say there's another Michael out there at Oak Park that we work with closely, Advanced Peace, Brother to Brother, Voice of the Youth, and all seven of the CIWs. Um, we have a lane and a role and responsibility. We've built up our efficacy around how to respond to those, those crises, and part of our ability to interrupt violence is how we show up both at the scene and then at the hospitals and in those ERs. During COVID, we, um, are the only folks that can go into Kaiser and into UC Davis and talk to their social workers. Um, they have all of our IDs, we have the credentials to talk not only to Dr. Leggett, who is the surgeon, um, who is on, you know, on the phone with us to say, hey, um, that, that ambulance is on its way, and it's a young man or young woman that's a gun violence, and we talk directly to those surgeons, or we talk directly to Kristy Adams at UC Davis, just talking about, um, that young person that did survive but needs some other, um, community wraparound services, and this is the team that does this work. And we've been building it out, um, and we're really proud of what we've been able to accomplish. So just investing in what works, um, uh, you know, our goal here today is that you would see not only the public health, um, expense that is directly connected, um, um, by gun violence, that you would make that commitment, um, around two million dollars over the next six months so we can not only, uh, continue the work that we're doing, but really enhance and build, um, uh, what we need to do in order to get in front of a lot of the gun violence issues that are happening right now today. Um, we also want to be able to come back to you, um, and, and have this long-term discussion. Uh, we believe, again, Mayor and, um, City Council, that we are first in the country, that we are unique. Um, and because of that, we need to be able to sustain this work, um, and it's not by happenstance, and it's gonna take an intentionality to build that. We believe we're the thought leaders, we believe that we are the ethnic studies professors, um, and we know that our ability to be able to walk and, um, really partner with public safety is going to be important. It's something that we've done all along the way, and so please rely on us as those thought leaders, um, that, uh, has really come and created an intervention. Lastly, I would like, um, our good, uh, brother Barry Axios from Voice of the Youth to close us out.
Um, good evening, everyone, and thank you for, to all my colleagues that, um, invested the time as well as, um, continue to lift up the work. Uh, I, I honor you, and I'm humbled to be a part of this team. Again, thank you, City Council members, for having us on this call. Um, I, I come with a, a heavy heart as I've just been on the field, on the ground, with my brother Les Simmons, um, as we've come to see more tragedy, um, in our community with the eighteen-year-old girl that was killed at a cemetery. Some of our other prevention workers were there, um, earlier in the, the, the evening, the night it happened, as well as me continuing to help, uh, a family, um, lifting up the name of Taylor Blackwell, a young nineteen-year-old black girl who was killed February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, here in Sacramento, and we still have yet to have any answers. Thank you, Mayor, for recently, um, making a statement, um, putting, um, some pressure and acknowledging Taylor Blackwell, but I want to make sure that we lift her name as well as the other young girl that, um, was killed, um, yesterday, and the reason why we do this work. Um, this, this work that, uh, comes with a lot of sacrifice. We are public safety. See us. We are the community empowering each other and building sustainable relationships based on love, trust, and respect. See us. We are intervention specialists with license to operate in the most traumatized, underserved, and violent communities. See us. Reform doesn't work. Policies have failed us. We are now asking for a full investment that doesn't minimize the work, but enhances us to be better peacekeepers, better public safety advocates. And it will save our communities. You say the City Council is responsible for how this city moves forward? Well, it's time to reimagine how we serve our community. By investing the money necessary that will create a safer community, let's all do this as a collective. Our communities have suffered enough. Our communities continue to be traumatized by violence and poverty and lack thereof opportunity. Remember, City Council members, as you sit on those seats, serving the community, these communities that we serve are the communities that did vote you in. They believed in you, so please, as we reimagine investment, please believe in them. And I, I, I say this humbly with the work that has been done in the last four to five years, the decrease in violence with our youth, as well as talking to our young people and them really not understanding what the future lies for them, that this incredible fight that we have to get them a little glimpse of hope, protection, and opportunity to impact the communities in a positive way. I think it's time now, um, there's been many conversations that we've had before about how do we all collectively lean in, as my great brother Les Simmons would say, in building and reimagining our community. I think if there's going to be a greater time with all of the racial injustice, the things that we have, um, fought, the, the moments that we've had, from Stephon Clark to Joseph Mann to the current uprising, the righteous uprising of George Floyd, I think this is our opportunity to show communities that don't believe people like us care, that we care by investing a sustainable amount of money to help us do the work that we do. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you so much, Barry. Um, thank you, Kendra. Thank you to, um, all of the presenters. I, I just wanna have, have an initial reaction, turn it over, uh, to my colleagues. Uh, that was an incredible presentation. Um, it was comprehensive. Um, it was, um, it showed the breadth of the work, uh, that you were all doing in the community. It was very, very impressive. We have been proud to be your partners, um, even if you're junior partners in a lot of this work. Uh, for example, in, in going out there, maybe on a limb, it wasn't a limb for, I think, uh, all of us who voted for it, but some might see it that way, to do Advanced Peace and to put real resources behind it, and I'm glad we did. Um, but really, really impressive. I know that I want to make a, a, a se- a direction suggestion here, as I alluded to at the beginning, but why don't I first hear from, uh, my colleagues who, uh, who want to weigh in, and then we can talk about some intended action. I'll begin with Vice Mayor Harris.
Sorry there, Mayor, I, I got, uh, okay.
There you go.
Um, you know, you're, you're right, it was a, a good presentation. Certainly, when a community mobilizes to lift itself up, it's something that you have to pay particular attention to. When Advanced Peace first made their presentation in Sacramento, uh, I was a big supporter right from the get-go. I think that that kind of work is essential to get on top of community violence. Uh, you know, it's, it's had some fits and starts, um, didn't go terribly smoothly, uh, right off the bat, but it's intensely difficult work to change the trajectory of lives of young people in the community who have not had a lot of resources and a lot of guidance and a lot of mentoring. Uh, it's still a good program, and I think that it's one that we should continue to support. I, I'm not gonna talk long. I, I think that Councilmember Jennings has done a tremendous amount of work in this arena, and Rick, I just want to thank you personally. Uh, you've done a great, great piece of work here. So I'll, um, I'll cede the floor here and let people speak, and, and I'll, I'll look forward to hearing Rick Jennings' comments.
Thank you very much. Let me ask, uh, Councilmember Warren, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I was privileged to hear the presentation yesterday and talk to a lot of the folks that are on, on the line now, and I just want to say how impressive it is to have such a collaboration from throughout our city of key people that are all committed to the cause. I think that's been one of the major fallacies in our city, uh, previously in trying to deal with some of these issues. We, we all tended to try to handle them on islands, and, and I think this is, um, a group of people that individually can get a lot done, but collectively can really have the kinds of impacts that we need to have here in our city. So I too want to thank, uh, my good friend, Councilman Jennings, for really, uh, driving this issue from the beginning and to, uh, continue to allow it to, uh, be seeded in fertile ground. And I'm in support of what they're doing. I think it is, now is the time for a significant investment in this cause, and, uh, and I'm very hopeful what the future will look like with this group and others that will continually be added to this group to help strengthen the team. And I just hope that everybody will stay focused on the mission, the mission of, of, of helping those that are in need. And so if we do that, Sacramento will be a much better place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember, uh, Geta?
Thank you, Miss, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, again, I also want to thank, uh, Councilmember Jennings here. Um, the first week when I came into office, I didn't have anything on the table at all. And, uh, the, the thing that he came to me right off the bat was, uh, a, his plan for the Gang, uh, Prevention Intervention Task Force and, um, and focusing on youth and focusing on community partners as the fundamental, uh, piece about it. So I, I wanna, I haven't forgot that day because it was one of the first pieces of public policy, which led to later Advanced Peace, which gave us the, the window to where we're at today. So I, I think I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Jennings for, for, uh, bringing that and the, the point of working with community partners, uh, as the, as a solution here. And the presentation, I also had an opportunity to, to see it, uh, earlier this week, and, and, uh, and I, and I think it's that, uh, the collective voice, and one of the things that was brought up is that, you know, looking at all youth homicides, we're down, all youth homicides. There's no question that, that- There's no question that our black youth are here suffering significantly. But to see that all youth homicides were down, and then we lost that momentum this year, that's, I think, tragic situation we're in today. I only did have one question, or maybe it's not even a question or suggestion, you know, because I think there is some work being done on that. But with Healing the Hood, there's a lot of work done on Fruit Ridge and Stockton in the southeast area there. But one area that I hear from my community is the area of Avondale and Glen Elder, Power Inn in Elder Creek, on the edge of the city, next to the industrial area. Someone once made a comment that nobody lives over there, but I disagree. There's a community that's looking for help, and there's a group of young, you know, young, inspiring youth or future that I hope that as Healing the Hood expands and moves forward, that there's some focus on their, George Sims Community Center's been a huge resource, but this kind of focus could help that community out there as well. So with that, glad to support the effort, and thank you, Councilmember Jennings and Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I live within stone's throw of a place that's now called Phoenix Park. But at one time, it was Franklin Villa, and it was one of the most notorious neighborhoods in the state of California. Gunshots almost every night, fights, it was open drug dealing, it was a drug supermarket. And Jackie Rose and Mr. Herb went in after SHRA got control of many of the properties and turned it around. And the question comes, how did they turn it around? And the term that Jackie uses is wraparound services. You get the kids, you get the family, you find out what they need, and you muster the resources that are already available to change that family and better their conditions. And that's essentially what the Black Child Legacy Campaign has evolved to. It's a wraparound services organization that gets with community members, sometimes in need, and finds out what the issues are, and then bring the services to bear to uplift that family. What the presentation has also demonstrated, not only have they been effective, but there's a nexus to COVID-19. The numbers cannot be more startling of how things were working before the virus hit and how things are going now. And it's a perfect storm has hit our country. The stay-at-home order, which a lot of people obeyed, along with the economic disruption that caused that, when we opened back up, it really opened up and things turned loose in a harmful way. And it also had to make this organization pivot, just like it's made up city council pivot. We don't meet the way we used to meet. And this organization can't operate the way it once operated because most of their contacts are face-to-face with people. And many of us are limiting our face-to-face contact, so they have to use other means. They have to make sure they have the proper PPE. They have to make sure they can communicate via computer and still be effective. So they've had to pivot, and as one of the councilmembers said, build the plane while you're flying it. So the request is for $2 million to take us through 2020. And I think we need to have more than that in order to get to the next budget cycle. So I would go with $4 million to get us through to June of next year, through the next budget, so we can include them in at the level that we can include them in. Meanwhile, they'll have a year to expand their operation and to become even more effective. So that's my recommendation, $4 million, and we will talk to them next budget season.
Well, thank you, Councilman Carr. I know that, again, I've been talking with Councilmember Jennings, and I think we may have a modification of that proposal, but certainly, certainly in that direction. Certainly in that direction. Let me turn it over to Councilman Chenier.
Thanks. So a couple things. Rick, thank you for your leadership on this. It's been really important. Larry, I think the problem with going to June is we wouldn't be able to use COVID money for January through June because of the guidance on that, which is unfortunate. All services have to be rendered by the thirty-first of December this year, so that's...
The money does have to be obligated?
No, service is rendered, unfortunately. But you can, the city attorney can certainly address that. Just a couple things. One is, you know, and certainly I've been involved in a lot of youth work over the years, and my challenge has always been understanding that we weren't reaching a lot of the young people that we needed to reach, who were making bad decisions or winning gangs for whatever reasons. But we needed to provide the services. And there are so many folks who are on this display tonight, and Ms. Jackie, you know, you and I go back twenty, twenty-five years now, who have been doing the hard work every day, and I just want to say thank you and recognize that and understanding that you need to be resourced to the point where you're not worrying about next month or six months from now or even a year from now. We know that programs and change takes time, and we know it takes resources and a real commitment and investment to make something happen over time and being persistent. So, you know, I think what we saw too is when you see two great years and then one year that's been horrible, and because of COVID or whatever reasons, it really points out the need for sustainability and continuing funding, whether we, whether things are good or not, right? So I want to go back for a second to the days when we had ceasefire, and we had great numbers, particularly along Mack Road when we went through a year without any deaths. It just points out the need to do that. I think we have an opportunity now, as we think about the future and what's going to be, and decisions that we're going to be making over the next few weeks here, to put in language that guarantees money for young people's programs. We decided to put off Measure G or whatever, the not Measure G, for two years. But I think, again, we have an opportunity today and soon to think about how we guarantee funds for youth and how we put in, make sure that those funds reach all of our youth, those who are doing well, who are always at risk, and those who are not doing as well and for many, many reasons are at greater risk. So I just want to kind of plant that marker for discussions that we're going to be having over the next few weeks to think about how we can put something in where people like Robert's Center or Jackie Rose or others, brothers to brothers who are doing this work day in and day out, are not spending all of their time trying to find dollars to sustain the next day, but can really focus on the task at hand, which is making sure our young people have what they need to be successful and are keeping safe and positive. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Chenier. So I've been a little back and forth with Rick Jennings, and we'll allow Councilmember Jennings to wrap this up. And I want to, again, acknowledge him as the driving force behind this work. I don't think he has had much of a summer break here as he has been shepherding this through. I got involved as mayor in the last days to help a little bit. And Councilmember Jennings and I talked today, and I'll let him comment, of course, and of course with Chet Hewitt on behalf of the coalition that spoke today. Let me first say with regard to Councilmember Carr's comments. I think I can speak on behalf of the entire council. We are in this for the long haul. I can say, you know, whether it's Councilman Chenier's youth advocacy, whether it's every single member I could go through, this is the most important work that we do for all of our communities, especially our disadvantaged communities and our communities of color, and especially now with and for the African-American community. We are in this for the long haul, but we've got to get started. And frankly, there's a lot of things to get going here with all the constituent organizations that we heard from here tonight, and the need is now. And Councilmember Chenier is right. We do have this unique opportunity with CARES, which has its time limitations. What I want to suggest tonight is that we ask the city manager to bring back a proposal for $2 million to take us between now and the end of the calendar year. And that is just the beginning in terms of our youth agenda and our gang intervention agenda that we work over the next several days with the coalition we just heard, we just spoke with tonight, and Councilmember Jennings, and we do it as follows. $750,000 come from the existing gang intervention budget. Rick Jennings and I talked today. We're going to find a way to backfill that later down the line for some of the current grantees that are also dependent on, for funding. We would add to that $750,000, 1.25 million out of CARES. Now, this is going to take some concerted work over the next couple of days between the stakeholders, Councilmember Jennings, our city manager's office, my office, and the city attorney's office, to make sure that we craft this in such a way that it is clearly COVID-eligible. I know the experience throughout the country is that cities are using CARES fund for similar things. This shouldn't be that hard. And certainly, we can credibly make the argument, you've made the argument, look at the increase in homicides once COVID hit compared to the two years before. 1.25 million out of COVID, $750,000 out of the existing gang intervention budget. That is not the end of the conversation. We'll come back in ninety days and talk more about Advanced Peace. We'll talk more about Brother to Brother, both of which are included, by the way, in this consortium of proposals under the Black Child Legacy umbrella. And then we will figure out, either through the next CARES Act, through our general fund, through our efficiencies, as Dr. Kofor alluded to before, how we make these investments permanent and ongoing and how we enhance the level of investment for prevention and early intervention for young people. Let's get started tonight, because if we don't, and we continue to kind of go back and forth about the amount of money, and we don't actually land the plane effective next Tuesday and take a vote, then I worry that the money is not going to get out as fast as it otherwise should. So $2 million bucks, in the way that I discussed it, not the end of the story, but a great, great start. I want to ask Mr. Jennings and Chet Hewitt if they would respond, please, to what I have just put out there.
Chet, you want to go first?
I can do that if you'd like me to, Councilman.
Please do.
I just want to thank you again, Rick, and the mayor, and the members of the city council for giving us this opportunity to present before you. I think that we've answered a lot of the questions about its connection to COVID, importance of this work, about the efficacy of community engagement and leadership, and our ability to actually measure and be held accountable for the work that we are actually doing. This work is really born of collaboration. No one group did it by itself. It's all of us working together, finding our lane, as Kendra reminded us, and being willing to work across the community boundaries that so often separate us. Four years ago, five years ago, when we came before this body, one of the things that Councilmember Carr relayed to us was that he was tired of seeing groups work in silos. This was not a siloed activity. This is the integration of health and public health and human services and social services and youth development being brought together in service of community. I'd also want to say that as someone who gets to travel around the country and has spoke in different environments about the work we are doing, we are the envy of many other communities who wish they had something like BCLC in its expanded version under Healing the Hood, serving all communities in this comprehensive fashion. This is what anti-racism, anti-black, anti-brown, anti-sexual orientation, this is what our work to include people looks like. It doesn't come cheap, but it changes lives. And I just want to encourage us to move quickly towards moving the resources so we can continue this work, and then to get into the conversation about extending it, you know, over time. It's something that we can mutually, all of us, including every member of the city council, with your leadership, Mayor, that we can all be proud of. We are, in fact, leading the nation in this particular work. There's no way we should allow COVID, as unexpected of it is, to be the interrupting factor in this work when we have the ability to do something about it. Let's get going.
So are you okay with what I laid out, Chet?
I am accepting what you laid out, Mr. Mayor. The $2 million and agreement to come back within sixty to ninety days to talk about how do we extend the work and to do that on the very rubric that you laid out because we care about what's going on in our communities.
So the city attorney has advised me that both you, Mayor, you and Jay are right. The money has to be executed this year.
Jay and I are always right, Larry. Hey, let me turn it over for final comment to Councilmember Jennings.
So I just want to, I want to just say that today's objective was for you to meet our community partners. And I thought that they did an incredible job of introducing themselves and telling you of the incredible work that they're doing every single day for our young people and for their families. And I want to thank them personally for an incredible presentation that was full of content and full of results and their heart. I saw their heart in every single thing that they presented tonight. I wanted you to know more about the work that they do every day. I wanted you to know about their goals, their mission, and their strategies. And I wanted you to see the gaps that they have. And that's why we have to come back, because there are more areas, as was mentioned by Councilmember Geta, that we need to address that have not been addressed. And there are more areas that each one of us has in our districts that they can address if we bring it up and we can provide them with additional resources in order to be able to fill those gaps. And so that's why it's important for us to come back in sixty to ninety days and talk about not only where we are now, but sustainability going forward and making sure that each one of these CILs and each one of these community-based organizations and these partners are adequately compensated for the work that they're doing every single day. You know, I came to Sacramento, I mean, to California in nineteen seventy-six, and I became best friends with a lot of my great teammates. And that year, we won a Super Bowl. And I say that because I feel like I won a Super Bowl today in the great work that was being presented to us today in the city of Sacramento, where we have best practices that are going on right now in Sacramento. And my name was mentioned a whole lot, but my name should not be mentioned as much as Kim Williams and Les Simmons and Barry Axios and Jackie Rose and Chet Hewitt and Kendra Montgomery. And, I mean, I could go on and on and on and on and on. Those are the folks that are doing the work every single day. Those are the workpeople who deserve the credit. Their name needs to be above all other names. And they not only have been doing it for the last five years, for some of them, they've been doing it for the last twenty-five, thirty years. And I just want to thank them personally for being a part of our team here in the city of Sacramento, doing the work that we know is so important, because we could not do all of this without them. And we thank them for their dedication. We thank them for the relationship they've built in the community. We thank them for the trust that they've done and for their commitment to working and doing the work and waking up every day and getting the work done. So we thank them for that. And so Barry, I thought you did a great job of closing us out. And you said, "See us," and I want you to know that we do see you. You said, "Invest in us," and I want... And I want you to know that we're making the commitment to invest today and tomorrow and going forward. And you said collectively, "Lean in." And that's what we're all doing as a council. I'm confident we have the votes for all of us to lean in in order for us to do this work together. So I just want to thank my council for their support. I want to thank my collaboration, Heal in the Hood, Black Child Legacy Campaign. I want to thank them for the great work that they've done. This is probably one of the most incredible, the best presentations that I've seen since I've been on this council. And I thank you for the work that you did in putting it forth.
Right on. Just concur that all of you around in the community that do this work day in and day out are the real heroes in here. Couldn't agree more. So, City Manager, we would ask next week, I think it could almost even be a consent item, but there's a lot of work to do in between now to just work with our, with our city attorney and our city management. Councilmember Jennings can ride point. I will help. My team will help as well. That we come back with the $2 million in the way that I described it and we will get going to try to get this money out as quickly as possible. Thank you all very much. Great, great evening. Great, great evening. Thank you. All right, members, that is our formal agenda for this evening. I know I've got to get off the call and I'm going to ask Vice Mayor Harris to conclude. And I know, again, Councilmember Jennings wanted to adjourn in memory of John Lewis. And since I have to go, if you don't mind just prerogative for me to just say a couple of words about John Lewis.
Please.
First of all, we flew the flags, the city flag at half mast over the last couple of days. I want to thank the city manager and the team for working with us on that. There are few genuine American heroes left and John Lewis was one of them. And he is important to me not only for what he symbolizes, but because I had the rare privilege in life of actually knowing him a little bit, mostly through my brother Jeff, who runs the lead civil rights program sojourned to the past. He takes high school students on 10-day sojourns of the civil rights movement. And John Lewis, despite the fact that he was a national figure and a very busy member of Congress, never once missed talking to those young high school students when they came through Atlanta over the course of over a decade. And we all should look at his life and his sacrifice. And whenever we have doubt about whether or not it's okay to take a risk or okay to take a chance and to put ourselves out there for the greater good and the greater cause like we heard tonight and participated in tonight, we just need to remember John Lewis. A great, great American. And in a small, small way, I just was privileged to have him as a small part of my life, a great man. Vice Mayor Harris, I'm going to turn it to you to conclude the meeting. And I thank my colleagues and the staff and the public for a great meeting tonight. Thank you.
Mayor, if you could hang for one second, and I have a request for us. We know what's happened in Portland recently and we know the response that's come from Chicago. I'd also like the city of Sacramento to be proactive with the federal government here. We don't need them sending anyone here. And I think a letter from you and the council to the federal government. I'm happy to work on that and we can get that finalized next week if that works.
Why don't you do that? Yeah, I know I spoke out very strongly on the radio yesterday against Trump politicizing our work to heal and build community. And he ought to spend his time focusing on the coronavirus and the national problem that his lack of leadership has made worse and stop intervening in the good and important work that's going on in our cities. So I appreciate it, Jay. If you want to take the lead on that, that would be terrific. Thank you. Good night.
Good night, Mayor.
Good night, now.
Okay, councilmembers, Mindy has informed me we have four members, or four community members in the queue for comments not on the agenda. So why don't we go and go ahead and take those and we'll finish out with council comments and adjourn in memory of the great Mr. Lewis.
Thank you. Councilmember Guerra, did you have comments prior?
Let's get through the public comment. I can do it afterwards.
Perfect. Thank you. I have four callers in the queue. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Rob Coop. I live in District 4. The person that I want to listen to this, I decided to take off. I think that's disgraceful. Mayor Steinberg and the city council have met, agendized, put the red control ballot measure on for November's election. I'd like to know why. Two, Angela Ashby's body language at the last city council meeting was disgraceful. She was not even listening to the public on an agenda item. Three, if you don't listen to the people and do what they want, some of the other city council members may get the Steve Hansen treatment. Like, vote them out. I'd like to see all of you be voted out of office because you're a disgrace to the public. And what are you going to do about the way the evictions that are going to be happening when the evictions become legal again? You know what? Mayor Steinberg, in my opinion, has some of the same traits as President Trump. He's arrogant, throws temper, touches, doesn't listen to the public, and thinks he knows it all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
We need accountability. Accountability with police. Accountability. All of this means nothing without actual accountability by officers, actual liability to them if they violate policies. They shouldn't be able to kill multiple people, violate their rights, and harass community members multiple times before they get a write-up. That isn't enough. Cops should be required to have liability insurance. Cops should be investigated by an independent body, not a DA that is biased through union donations or because the DA needs police cooperation. Body cam footage should be sent to an off-site facility that the police have no access to. All requests to view the footage should be documented. All originals should be kept off-site and out of their hands or the community will not trust anything that is done with the footage when it is released. Also, I understand Daryl's gone. Let's stop, Strong Mayor. Just stop. How many times do we have to say this? Stop it. We went through this multiple times with Kevin Johnson. We went through the attempts to mislead us as to what it means. We wasted time and money in the city multiple times to go through this. We don't want Strong Mayor. Just stop. Please, for the love of God, don't waste our time and money again by trying to make another power grab. We didn't want KJ to have it. We don't want Daryl to have it. We don't trust that he'll make any movements. He's resisted us at every turn. He's condescended to us and the last thing we want is for him to have even more power, just so he can look powerful when he goes for his Senate run. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Do I start it?
Yes, you do. Please make your comments.
Good evening, council, and thank you very much for this opportunity. First and foremost, I want to thank the Black Child Legacy for the wonderful work that they're doing. I've had the pleasure of meeting some of their members. And I want to thank Les Simmons for his activity and I want to wish him the best of luck during the election. However, some of the coalition, I think with the money that's going in, which I'm 100% supportive of, some of the coalition, in particular one or two, have been identified, especially one was identified beginning of this year of mismanaging some of the grant money that was dealt with them. So the concern is when the money is being given out to such a wonderful organization like Black Child Legacy, how is this coalition being audited to make sure that they're not misusing funds for their personal gain? And also with this closure during the fall, I think we more than ever need the help of Black Child Legacy to make sure that our kids are safe. I wanted to know what the council is planning to do for these months that there is no school to help the students or to help the parents that need to work to make sure that they can put food on the table and they don't have the ability to homeschool studying or like fun. If you could let me know, I greatly appreciate it. But I want to mostly emphasize the fact that I think the money that was allocated to Black Child Legacy is not enough. They're doing such a wonderful job. But I do believe that their coalition, there needs to be an audit. There's money going toward this coalition to make sure all the funds are staying with the communities that are dedicated to support. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, everyone. My comments were towards Mayor Steinberg, but he has left the building. But I'll talk as if he's still here. The mayor said that he supports defunding the police. This is complete news to us. He also said that he wants us to participate and talk about where the funding should go. You all have had over 100 public comments in the last month and a half telling you exactly where we want the money to go. You want to divert money towards, you want to divert money. And these orgs that presented today are a few options, but shouldn't be prioritized because they were given the opportunity to speak today. There are so many other organizations such as Mental Health First, I'm going to repeat that again, Mental Health First, that are doing similar work and only has the capacity to provide services on the weekend, which can be improved if you divert funding from the police towards them. You want to take $2 million from CARES Act to fund how many programs that talk today, but you could provide them more millions of dollars if you defund the police and invest in those organizations. The presentation today is literal proof in front of your faces that police are not needed to prevent or intervene or even needed to help individuals and communities recover from violence. There has been an increase in violence and homicides since COVID-19 and that's because people don't have access to resources such as education, their schools, mental health programs, food pantries, housing. And these same resources are the same resources that your racist budget prevents people, specifically black and brown people because it's racist, from having access to these resources. COVID is a public health crisis that increases violence and your racist budget prioritizes police is also a public health crisis that increases violence. Crime isn't caused because people decide to wake up and commit crime. Crime is caused because people don't have access to resources. Communities don't have access to resources. The next time you decide to have this conversation and have presentations by other organizations, invite mental health.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Defund the police and invest in mental health first.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor Harris, I have no more callers.
Thank you, Mindy. Appreciate your efforts there. So I see Councilmember Guerra just has his hand up to make some comments.
Yeah, thank you very much, Vice Mayor. First, I want to thank you, Vice Mayor, for holding a real critical town hall at the Gardenland Neighborhood Association meeting. I have a request for the city manager and also the mayor, which I've talked to him about. We're facing a tremendous catastrophe in the Latino community with the rise of COVID cases. And particularly now in Sacramento County, the 95838, which was discussed today, 95828 and 95823 are the highest ZIP codes in the entire county of COVID, which are the communities that are predominantly Latino and also black. And just since our last meeting, when Vice Mayor Harris and I met with a community that is, has one of the highest population of Latinos, we've had an increase of over 200 cases in the Latino community in Sac County. And so the request here is to really look at the healthcare worker proposal on contact tracing that was brought forth by the Latino Economic Council. I think we have an urgency matter here now. We're in partnership with the county. We need to start looking at that because the situation is so significant. So I'm asking the city manager if he can look at that proposal and figure out how we can work with the county and move faster on that request. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, and thanks again for holding a great conversation with also Stanford Settlement on Friday.
Yeah, Councilmember Guerra, it was a joy to have you there. Obviously, you were well received by the Latino community on North Gate and it was a very productive discussion. I'd like to add to your request for the city manager. A really, I think viable idea was raised by Marvea Sala about the possibility of using the COVID trailers at Cal Expo for Latino community members who contract the COVID disease and who cannot adequately socially isolate, cannot recuperate in isolation because their families are too big and too small a space. So the request is this, to look into the possibility of using those COVID isolation trailers for community members who actually need a physical space to isolate during their recuperation. I know that those trailers are underutilized currently because we haven't had the spike of COVID, at least to this point, amongst the homeless population. So I would like to look into the possibility of using it for other community members who cannot isolate adequately for their recuperation. Are there any other council comments?
Well, Vice Mayor, I just wanted to say thank you for bringing that up and offering to push that. I'd only add that we, the county has also a contract with some of the motels so that if we could see if that may be a possibility. But you are correct that there is an underutilization of the trailers and that seems to be low-hanging fruit. And if there's an opportunity with motels to help people self-isolate, either way, I think that's a great idea that came straight from the neighborhood.
That's right. It's an idea worth exploring.
We'll take a look at that. I promise. We will go through it. Although the trailers now, I think, are at higher occupancy than they were earlier. We'll definitely take a look at it.
Thank you, Chris. I mean, we've got them. We might as well use them to the best of our capabilities.
That's a resource.
Anybody else? All right. Does anybody have any comments about John Lewis as we adjourn in memory of this great American?
So yeah, I want to kind of start us off in that I thought it was appropriate that we close in honor of Congressman John Lewis. Died at the age of 80, unfortunately, of pancreatic cancer. But he committed his life to being an activist to, over the past six decades. Many people know that he was arrested multiple times while organizing sit-ins in segregated restaurants or for bus services. Founder of the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee, which was a student-led organization. He was one of the 13 original Freedom Riders. And in 1993, he helped Dr. Martin Luther King organize the March on Washington and was the chairman of the Voter Education Project. So, you know, he was a man that many of us looked up to because he was relentless and he lived his life without fear, always doing what was right, trying to find that "good trouble," as he would say. And so I thought it was very appropriate that we close this meeting in honor of him and would love my colleagues if they have anything to add to what I've said. I wanted to give you the opportunity to be able to add on to that.
Any comments?
Vice Mayor, this is Allen. I just want to say, well said, Rick. You know, I too, I think, you know, as I put it into perspective, feel like, you know, I lost our city and our country lost somebody that we actually knew who had put his life on the line and served as an example for all of us during very difficult time in our country. And so, you know, I had never had the opportunity to meet John Lewis, but I felt like I knew him in spirit and connected to him. And our country is better off because of him. And our country is better off because of him. And so I think it is very appropriate that we adjourn in memory of Mr. John Lewis.
You're here.
Agreed. John Lewis was a truly inspirational figure who will continue to inspire for decades, if not, you know, for the rest of the eternity of our country. A truly great American, a man who spoke the truth in a lot of ways. Okay, everybody, all good? We are adjourned.
Thank you.